Bit, B I T dot L Y forward slash virtual C C meetings. That's bit, B as in boy, bit dot L Y forward slash virtual C C meetings. So now to help ensure decorum in our meetings, we ask that you please abide by the following guidelines. Number one, please refrain from any behavior that is disruptive, distracting, profane, or inhibits the meeting in any way. Two, while you are on the phone waiting for your opportunity to speak, please mute the meeting, the meeting broadcast on whatever way you're watching, whether it be F L T V, YouTube, Comcast, or A T and T, if you're watching simultaneously to avoid delays in the broadcast. I'll call upon you when it's your turn to speak and also notify you when your time has expired. City has automatically added speakers into the listen only mode and you will be unmuted when recognized to speak. Finally, once you have completed speaking, you will be muted and you can either hang up to exit the meeting or you can stay on and listen to the balance of the meeting. So we have a couple of agenda announcements. First of all, removed from the agenda is C R four regarding disposition of surplus property. And C P four, a motion approving agreement regarding the automated fare collection system pay by phone technologies. With that having been said, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, if we're going to walk this resolution on, can I read that into the record just because it's a walk on resolution?
Oh, we'll also have a walk on resolution regarding the events that occurred on January sixth, twenty twenty one at the nation's capital.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just have one edit for the minutes?
Oh, yes.
Thank you. On the meeting minutes of January fifth at one thirty P M, second paragraph on the top, it should say historic West Side grade school, not old West Side grade school. Thank you, and that's it for me.
Okay, thank you for catching that. I wouldn't have slept tonight.
Well, I want you to sleep. I'm sure you'll have plenty of other reasons to think about sleeping.
Okay, so now can we have a motion to approve the minutes in the agenda as? Commissioner McKenzie?
Not yet present, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the minutes in the agenda are now approved. So now I would invite Commissioner Moritas, who will make a proclamation, oh, present a proclamation regarding Cardinal Gibbons High School Football Team. Commissioner Moritas? You could go by the podium also.
Okay, I'm far enough away. Well, welcome Cardinal Gibbons Chiefs. We're so excited you all are here. I think this is our first in-person proclamation that we've done in a while, so welcome. We'll keep our distance and I was sorry, put my mask back on before I call you up here. But on behalf-
Could you put, hold the microphone closer to you? No, no, just hold it closer to your mouth.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, sorry. So from the office of the mayor from the city of Fort Lauderdale, we issued this proclamation presented to twenty twenty class four A state champions Cardinal Gibbons High School Varsity Football Team. Whereas on December seventeenth, twenty twenty, the Cardinal Gibbons Varsity Football Team won their second state title in three years as they roared past Jacksonville in the Florida High School Athletic Association Class Four A State Championship in Tallahassee, Florida. Whereas in addition to a proud tradition of academic achievement, Cardinal Gibbons High School Athletics is built on a tradition of excellence both on and off the field. Since the school's inception in nineteen sixty-one produced fifty-eight state championships, over seventy individual state champions, and established a nationally recognized football program with state, regional, and district championship wins. Whereas the Cardinal Gibbons Chiefs choreographed a powerhouse performance against the Bulldogs, the Chiefs offense accumulated a total of a hundred and twenty-nine rushing yards, three hundred and thirty-two passing yards for a total of five touchdowns, earning the Chiefs their second state title for a thirty-five, twenty-one victory over their opponent at Doak Campbell Stadium. Whereas head coach Matt Dubuk, did I say that correctly? Dubak, sorry. Thank you for, there's, I have another. Palaghi? Palaghi, okay, please forgive me. Okay. Matt Dubak credits much of the Chiefs' success to quarterback Brody Palaghi for his nearless flawless execution on the field and to the outstanding team of athletes who displayed exemplary tenacity throughout the entire season as they remained focused on their ultimate goal. Whereas the mayor and city commissioners congratulate the Cardinal Gibbons Varsity Football Team, the entire athletic staff on their second state championship win and do wish the players and coaches much continued success. Now therefore, we as city commissioners at the city of Fort Lauderdale do hereby proclaim January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one as Cardinal Gibbons High School Varsity Football Team Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale dated this day from Mayor Dean J. Trentalis. Congratulations. Do either one of you, Tom or Matt, want to come up and say a word on behalf of your school and team? We'd love to hear from you. I'll pass the mic.
On behalf of Cardinal Gibbons High School, we'd like to thank the city of Fort Lauderdale, Mayor Trentalis, all the commissioners. Our boys went up to Doak Campbell Stadium, represented the city of Fort Lauderdale well. We now have bragging rights for a year over the city of Jacksonville, so if you know anybody in Jacksonville, but congratulations to Coach Dubak, who's an excellent coach, the boys who represented the school well, our cheerleaders, our fans. We'd just like to again thank the city of Fort Lauderdale for this incredible, incredible honor. Thank you.
Great. And Commissioner Moritas. Do our city proud. Thank you so much.
Yes, you do make us proud. Say a few words.
Sure.
I'd like to say thank you to Cardinal Gibbons. Obviously, this is, this was my fifth year as the head coach and we've won two state championships in five years. With that, you know, it's not easy and in the year of COVID, obviously, there were many trials and tribulations, but our kids overcame it. Our administration guided us through the uncharted waters as they still do today and will continue to do our best job to represent the city of Fort Lauderdale and obviously our school and community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. So at this point, we now move on to our regular agenda. And as part of our agenda, there is certain number of items that are considered consent items and they're voted on all at once. If there's a commissioner that wishes to pull such item or two where we would vote on it separately and discuss it separately, now will be the time that I would ask each commissioner, like to pull such an item. If you wish to speak on such an item, you will be able to speak at that time rather than at the beginning. If an item is not pulled and you wish to speak on such an item before we vote on it, you'll be invited to speak at that time. So Commissioner Moritas, do you have any items you'd like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, C P two?
C P two? Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually, I actually only had C P two as well listed. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner McKenzie?
None, sir.
None? And Commissioner Sorenson?
None.
None, okay, so just C P two. So if there's anyone in the community that wishes to speak on any consent agenda item other than C P two, now would be the time to do it. I see that. Somebody has asked to speak on C R three. Pat O'Laughlin? Is Pat there?
He spoke earlier. I wonder if he spoke at our conference meeting?
Mayor, I believe he meant to sign up for the conference meeting.
Which he did speak at, right? Okay.
Well, he has down here C R three. So, okay. All right, very good. That being said, and nobody else has signed up to speak on any of the consent agenda items that I can see other than C P two, do I hear a motion to approve all the consent agenda items except C P two?
Moved.
Been moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those consent agenda items are now approved except the ones that were removed from the agenda, which were C R four and C P. We'll now take up C P two. This is concerning, this is concerning the motion to approve an agreement for medical director services for the fire rescue department. It's a three-year contract. We have a number of people who've signed up to speak. We'll start with Benny Menendez, to be followed by Sunil Kumar, to be followed by Dr. Warren Sturman. Is Benny Menendez on the line?
He is, he's been recognized, he just needs to unmute his phone. Unmute or star six, Dr. Menendez.
Okay.
There you go, we can hear you.
Yes, are you guys able to see me?
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm in front of the video camera, I don't know what happened.
Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, I'm Dr. Benny Menendez, Medical Director, current Medical Director for Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue, also the Director of Broward- also the Director of Broward Health Medical Center. Good evening for all the commissioners, all the members of the city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a board certified ER doctor that started in this beautiful city working 27 years ago, and I still working at the same hospital. Important to mention that about 65 to 70% of our city fire rescue transport go to the Broward Health. Yes, to the emergency department where I am the director. Every time that our city is involved in major events, at the airshow, boat show, Tortuga Festival, St. Patrick, for all you like, my presence is there to coordinate and supervise with fire rescue. Unfortunately, also I'm involved, I was involved in the airport and farline shooting. When patients are transported to the ER, there's a great opportunity to teach and learn about the medic necessities in real time. That is a valuable feedback to the medics. I feel that I'm not only the fire medical director, but also a counselor for their personal issues, which I'm very happy to do. The majority of the fire rescue staff and policy department have my personal contact number, and I'm on call 24/7 with a quick response. I invite you to ask any medic on the street about my presence and response. I'm invested in this city, and I will continue to work hard with the new initiatives for this city. And I think that in three minutes, it's impossible to list, but I can submit it to you. The ideal world of fire rescue is to have a fire rescue medical director in control of the ER where patient will be transported. Not too many fire rescue department have the privilege that we have with me. With me as a medical director, our city will continue to get a great care. I don't see the strategic plan right now of bringing a physician who practices in Weston, does not work in any facilities where Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue bring patients, and his contract is $20,000 more than a year. Please, look at my performance, the commitment that I have demonstrated all these years, and I'm humbled to request your support to keep me as your fire, Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Director.
Great.
Thank you very much, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Menendez.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Dr. Menendez? Okay.
I do, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Menendez, good evening and thank you for joining us. I really appreciate your time this evening. Dr. Menendez, has anyone ever given you a bad review or said, gee, we think you're lacking in this way, or we would like this to be done better, or have met with you personally to say we're unhappy with your service?
Thank you for letting me the opportunity, Vice Mayor. No, I've never received anything. My career always has been like excellence, and my response to all the fire rescue issues in the community and either associated with the hospital have been excellent. And my medical staff, the boots on the ground, everybody can state that that's all been my policy in these 27 years that I've been working in this city.
So not even a heads up, not even a critique, not even a performance review that said something was lacking? Nothing?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing, thank you, Dr. Menendez.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have any questions of Dr. Menendez?
I just wanted to know, Dr. Menendez, how many years have you been serving as the medical director or assistant medical director?
For Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue, I started as assistant medical director when Dr. El Senari was the director. That was around 2006, I believe. And I became Director of Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue in 2016.
And they were all three-year contracts, is that how we award our contracts?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Okay, Mayor, I've got a question for Chris.
Yes, sir.
Chris, why is this even before us? Help me understand from a charter, but we don't evaluate, you know, hires that the fire chief makes. Help me understand that.
It's the adoption of a contract.
Yeah, we're not evaluating, we're not giving our opinion on the choice, we just, this is just a contract approval.
It's just a, yeah, it's a, it came as a consent purchasing item, so it was just because it's a contract.
Just because it's a contract over a certain dollar amount?
Correct.
And what's the dollar amount threshold that comes before us?
Over $100,000.
Okay, so what is, what's our purpose in, as a commission? What should we be doing in evaluating this? What's the scope, or maybe Alan, this is a question for you. What are we supposed to evaluate here?
Well, you're essentially approving an expenditure by the city of Fort Lauderdale, and obviously approving the entry into a contract, the particular contract that's before you. There's no set specific criteria, obviously, that's delineated for every contract is different. You do have a professional staff in a variety of disciplines. This one obviously involves EMS to a certain extent. Traditionally, the city commission gives great deference to your professional staff that analyzes these things and makes these recommendations. You have the authority to approve or not approve, but at some point, you have to look to your professional staff to either question them or to rely on their recommendations.
Okay, that helps for the framework, thank you, Alan, Chris, thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, Sunil Kumar, is Sunil there?
Dr. Kumar is there, he has been recognized. Dr. Kumar, star six to unmute, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you commissioners for allowing me to talk. I am Sunil Kumar, I'm the Medical Director of ICU at Broward Health Medical Center, and I'm also the current Chief of Staff at the hospital. But I want to make it very clear, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the physician leadership, and not on behalf of the hospital. I've been at the hospital for the last 23 years serving this community. So it's not about me, that's not why I'm here. I'm a little concerned about the entire process that we are discussing today of changing the medical director. As you all understand, Broward Health Medical Center is part of the safety net system hospital for this community. And obviously, we don't do this alone, we are at bedside, and your wonderful fire rescue, Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue is part of our team. This is a continuum of care. But 80% of your patients of Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue brings to Broward Health Medical Center. This includes the Level 1 Trauma Center, obviously, we are the only Level 1 Trauma Center in the northern part of Broward County. Several unfortunate cardiac arrest, subdyspnea, pediatric diseases, strokes especially, they all come to us. Like you mentioned, it's a continuous process. You know, some of these unfortunate events starts at home, or maybe on the street, and they bring them via the emergency room, the initial care is done in the ER, and they come to my ICU. So the entire process from the beginning till end is important. That chain of command is extremely important. The last thing we want to do is disrupting that chain of command that could affect the entire purpose of our safety net system. You know, there's a lot of high-level coordination happens in this care. We create protocols in ICU that affects what happens in the ER. Fire rescue protocols affects what happens, or what is coming into the ER, and eventually that affects patient care. So if there is a process issue, my recommendation as part of a process improvement team at Broward Health, we should discuss a process improvement. I don't think disrupting the process is a way to improve a process improvement. I think that would clearly affect the patients that we are going to serve in our community. So I'm not sure why this disruption, there is a way to improve the process. As leaders, that's what we need to think. So I, to the community leaders, before you make any decisions about this particular contract, I really want you all to think about the entire process, how that disruption is going to affect the community that we serve, so you all can do the right thing for the community, and that's what I'm hoping. Thank you again for allowing me to speak today, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions if we have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions of the doctor? Okay, there being none. The next person is Dr. Warren Sterman, followed by Dr. Neil Maransky. Dr. Sterman, are you there?
He has been recognized. Dr. Sterman, either star six to unmute, or your unmute button.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, you have three minutes, Dr. Ster.
Okay, I apologize for not being on the Zoom. I want to thank the Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for all you do for the city. I'm here talking on behalf of Dr. Benny Menendez. Most of you know me, I practiced in this city for somewhat neighborhood 30 years. In addition, like some of the other doctors, I'm a resident and a consumer. In addition, I've also volunteered with fire rescue as being involved with the CERT team and Medical Reserve Corps. My, a couple of quick thoughts. Number one, I'm speaking on my behalf, I am not speaking on behalf of any organization, any civic association, any hospital, this is strictly my personal opinion. Number two, I have absolutely nothing negative to say about the other physician. This is strictly on behalf of support for Dr. Benny Menendez. The other physician is perfectly qualified, I just have my own personal preference. I think like Dr. Kumar said, that there's a significant benefit from having a physician that practices within the city for continuity of care. This thing called continuity of care, where you go from fire rescue into the ER and up to the hospital, and they can see the whole process. Number two, as far as dealing with a trauma center, Dr. Menendez has been the head of an emergency room that's a Level 1 Trauma Center. The things that come through our ER, including gunshot wounds, we all know that there was an airport shooting, a couple airplanes that have gone down off of Executive Airport, the cars, guns, and all that, that we see on a daily basis. Dr. Menendez sees that seamlessly through there. If there's any question about, I heard about his involvement, I have a different perspective than the other physicians. As a volunteer, I have helped with medical services, July 4th, air and sea show, music festivals, boat parades, numerous occasions I have been out there volunteering my service with other volunteers, and every time I'm there, Dr. Menendez is there in a tent dealing with fire rescue. I've interacted with EMS chiefs, EMS fire rescue. All the years I've done this, and this is about 12 years to 15 years, never heard anything but praise about Dr. Menendez and the services he's given. I think I'll stop right now in case there's any questions.
Okay, great. Does anyone have any questions of Dr. Ster? Okay, there being none, thank you, Dr. Ster. Dr. Maransky, followed by Venu, okay, help me out here. Devab Hak Tuni. Mr. Maransky, Dr. Maransky.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Dr. Neil Maransky, I am a board certified family physician and a fellowship trained board certified palliative physician that helps supervise the palliative services provided at Broward Health System, period. I'm the current Treasurer Secretary for Medical Staff, and I'm speaking on behalf of medical staff and the patients of Broward County, specifically Fort Lauderdale, the city in which I live. I've worked with Benny Menendez, I've also worked with the other physician who is named in the contract, and both of them are qualified exceptional physicians. That's not a question or a concern that I have. I do have very deep concern regarding the provision of care to my neighbors, myself, my family, and the community. The systems in place at Broward Health, who will receive the vast majority of EMS patient transports, are dynamic, ongoing, and evolving. And having a person that's involved in that process from the clinical level to the administrative level from a medical staff perspective is critical. This job cannot be performed in any manner that would be acceptable to the community standard by a physician who's not actively involved on a daily basis. The fact that these dynamic processes are flexible is incredibly important. When we had the port shooting, we didn't invent anything. We followed our process and adapted, and we were able to adapt and take in 80-something patients in the course of a few hours while performing surgery on several of them as a Level 1 Trauma Receiving. Happened because intimate knowledge of the people involved regarding the processes was intact. All the pieces were known to all the players, and that's why we didn't drop the ball when 80-something people showed up at our door. During the Stoneman Douglas shooting, happened in another area, not in Fort Lauderdale. Those patients were transported, especially every single pediatric patient that needed surgery was transported to Broward Health Medical Center, came through our emergency preparedness process. And that process did not fail. We've continually updated and improved it, but it didn't fail because the players involved are the right players at the right positions, knowing what is going on at multiple levels. So you don't have unintended consequences. So in short, I have a concern. I don't want politics in any way to interfere with the care we provide to patients. It's a very, very thin veneer between the process of providing care to patients and the actual care that occurs at bedside. Benny Menendez, if he has issues or concerns regarding his communication, which I've never experienced, those should need to be addressed, but as far as his ability to provide and work with the team that cares for our community in a seamless manner, at a very high level, and changing it as we get new data and increase the knowledge of medicine to provide the best world-founded care we can, he's the person we need in that position. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you so much. Dr. D? Dr. Venu Devab Hak Tuni.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, can you pronounce your name?
This is Dr. Venu Devab Hak Tuni, thanks for giving me this opportunity. I'm the Medical Director for the Pediatric Intensive Care Unit, kind of like the other end of what Dr. Kumar does for the adults. And again, not to keep repeating, you know, we are the safety net hospital for the Broward County, north of State Road 84. We're a Level 1 Trauma, Pediatric Trauma Center, and a Level 1 PICU. And Dr. Menendez oversees the ER, which is one of the busiest ER for both adults and pediatric. And we as medical leaders are constantly planning protocols and treatment plans for the sick patients. And you know, pediatric care, as you all know, children are so vulnerable and can deteriorate when they get sick and deteriorate very quickly, and we rely on our EMS to provide that immediate response and onsite care, which is what keeps them stable or alive for us to take over and help them. I think having somebody with you know, information, access to the highest level of pediatric care will help our EMTs greatly with all our protocols and training. So I concur with the rest of the team that we are deeply concerned with this plausible change, and especially from my standpoint, not knowing the ability of pediatric knowledge in the other person, so thanks for listening to me.
Great, thank you so much, sir. Followed by Gary Lay, or Lai, and followed by Joanne Smith. Is Gary there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great, thank you. So I'm the Chief of Emergency Medicine at Broward Health Coral Springs Emergency Room, and you know, I've known Dr. Benny Menendez for like the past 14 years, and I can just let you know, like as far as his leadership goes. And I can just let you know, like, as far as his leadership goes, you know, it's, you know, unmatched. And as far as his professionalism, interaction with EMS, with our physicians, with the hospital staff, nurses, you know, he's always been very on point as far as like patient and, you know, making sure we do everything that's best for the patient. I agree, you know, I don't get involved into kind of politics and such that. But Jeff, definitely, this is a call to support Dr. Menendez, you know, just like the other doctors had mentioned. You know, he spent countless kind of hours and days and nights, always kind of, you know, leading Broward Health Medical Center, the level one trauma center, you know, being involved in all those catastrophes and, you know, always available for volunteers at all the medical events for the city, you know. And all I can just say is that, you know, he's always been very supportive and professional. And I think, you know, he's the man to kind of stay in place for the medical directorship for the EMS program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joanne Smith, are you there? Joanne?
I'm looking, Mayor, we have a lot of people dialed in. I do not see as an attendee, I do not see Joanne.
Okay.
I'm not seeing, not seeing that, that name.
Okay. We have Dr. Roach here, but before we invite him to speak, I wonder if I could ask our fire chief, Rhoda May Kerr, to come to the podium and explain to the community exactly what we're looking to accomplish here, if you don't mind. Just take a minute or two and in your own words.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. About a year ago, we started talking about making a change in our medical direction. And we had every desire to improve the community service that we provide. And the idea was is that we want to be more progressive and more proactive instead of just reactive. And all the people before us that have spoken, we are all in agreement with everything that they said in regard to the continuity of care. There is going to be no change whatsoever in our continuity of care. There'll be no change whatsoever in which patient gets transported to Broward Health System. The contract is with the doctor. It is not with the hospital. About sixty-five percent of the almost, I think, twenty-eight thousand transports that we do annually do end up at Broward Health. There will be no change. The protocols that they establish that we follow, we will continue to follow. So I don't think that there's any concern about losing, you know, service and care of our people in our community. That's not going to happen. And I think that, I think we just have to be aware of, we have been through a tremendous year with the COVID and the pandemic. And I, and I don't want to dwell on the things like, you know, I heard, did we ever do a performance evaluation, those type of things? I don't want to dwell on the negatives. I want to dwell on the positives and where we want to go. And I have to say that Dr. Roach is the medical director for the Broward Sheriff's Office Fire Rescue, as well as Sunrise Fire Rescue. And during the pandemic time, we had a lot of help and assistance from Dr. Roach in regard to the pandemic and protocols and things that we had to do to protect our firefighters and medics. And the other part is, Dr. Roach is also the medical director for the Regional Communications Center, which is, dictates all of our dispatch and all of our responses. And by having him there, we can collaborate much better. We share common protocols. And I have with me Captain, I'm sorry, I just evoked you, Battalion Chief Stephen Shaw. And I'm going to let him introduce himself because he has some really great credentials. And he's going to just give you a very quick bullet list of some of the things that we want to do that Dr. Roach is going to help us do. And we just want to improve the service to the community. We want to continue to move forward, and we want to continue to be the best in the nation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Shaw. I've been with the Fire Rescue Department here for twenty-one and a half years. I'm currently the Battalion Chief of EMS, also a paramedic and a registered nurse. I've had the opportunities to work at both Plantation General Hospital and North Broward Medical Center. And I'm currently the Chair of the EMS Subcommittee for the Fire Chiefs Association of Broward County. I've had the opportunity to know Jim Roach for some time now, and I've worked with him significantly over the last few years in many projects, even before we started having these conversations. Before, in the past few years, he's helped us with our cardiac arrest systems assessment, which was, which was an initiative to take a deep dive into the way we treat cardiac arrest in the field. He was a subject matter expert on helping us develop our high-performance CPR protocols to increase cardiac arrest survival. And he was a key communicator during the COVID crisis during the last year. Already, as part of his current medical directorships, he has improved hands to chest via dispatch on our cardiac arrest patients in the field. Before, that critical time before we get there, he's working on that timeframe right now. He's developed a medical protocol app that allows the individual to not only see their protocols on a computer screen at their desktop, but also an app-based functionality, which we currently do not have. And he's spearheading whole blood in the field for trauma patients and other patients as well. Some of the future initiatives we have going on for EMS this year include a campaign to go straight out against out-of-hospital cardiac arrest. We want to basically take war on cardiac arrest. We want to increase survival rates and make sure people go home neurologically intact. And Dr. Roach has a lot of experience in that and looking forward to work with them on that. We also want to do a do your part campaign, a community initiative, to tell people in the community what they can do as part of all the initiatives we and the EMS Bureau are spearheading. Dr. Roach has a very robust CQI process that he uses for BSO that after seeing it, we definitely want to incorporate many parts of that into our current quality improvement program. We talked about EMS hands-on training, and to be quite frank, we are going to use the heck out of Dr. Roach this year in terms of hands-on training. We've already discussed this. The amount of training we're talking about is at least one day a week, plus training our new hires, plus training on a monthly basis for a variety of different tasks. We have a lot of things planned. We're very excited about that. One of the most, one of the biggest initiatives that we want to spearhead this year is the concept of community paramedicine or mobile integrated healthcare. Dr. Roach and I have talked about this significantly. It's definitely one of the forefronts on our priority list. And these are one of the things that his professional network, the professional network I've been developing over the last year, is something that is going to definitely help establish in that process. I'll leave it right there, but I just wanted to say thank you for letting me speak, and I'm definitely on board with, following through with the chief's initiative here. So thank you for letting me speak.
Great, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions of the chief?
I do, Mayor. And Chief. I know we're giving a contract to a person and not a hospital, but this is, this is tough for me. It's hard for me to separate the value that Broward Health, as our trauma hospital in our city, brings to our city and those who you're transporting, even though, like you said, sixty-five percent of them go to Broward Health. So obviously, some of them are going other places, but I guess my question would be, is there value in having the medical director also be the head of the ER at Broward Health since it's our trauma hospital?
There really isn't. I mean, every doctor that is a medical director has that ER experience, and they've had that experience either at Broward Health or some other ER or in a trauma center. So it doesn't make any difference. We're not severing our relationship with Broward Health at all. It just means we have our, our protocols are developed by, you know, a different medical director. And the medical director, we operate under that medical director's license. That's really the change that you're going to see. There's no change that you'll see in regard to our relationship with Broward Health.
You don't see that there would not be value in having that relationship with the hospital in our city where we take most of our sixty-five percent of the people?
I don't. And if you think about it, you look at all the other entities that provide EMS services and transport, and every trauma patient on this end of the county goes to Broward Health. Not every agency has their medical director is in the Broward Health system. And it, it still doesn't change the quality of care that the patient is getting out in the field.
Okay. Do you think there's any value, and these are just some concerns we've heard publicly tonight, is there any value in having the medical director actually work in our city?
I don't think that makes a difference either, because even though we, you know, we transport everybody that comes from our city, we take them to various hospitals. They're not all going to Broward Health. And, and, you know, it doesn't really matter where they, where they practice. In fact, I know of entities that their medical directors don't even live in the same state.
So just from my, and I'm trying to make a decision based on facts and not on my kind of gut reaction. My gut reaction would say, I would think there's value in having a relationship with the medical director at Broward Hospital. That's my, that's my gut reaction. So I'm just, I'm asking, I'm getting your answers. And, you know, I also trust you all as my fire department, and I always have. And you, you perform well. I, I, like I said, I value you too. So I value both groups, and obviously I value both the doctors. And we've heard from everyone that they're both great, right? So we're trying to make a decision. Do we go with what you're recommending? Or do we keep this relationship that we've had? And I'm, I'm just trying to be as factual as possible in taking any feelings out. I've obviously used Broward Health, myself, my entire family, for, you know, probably fifty years, we've been using this Broward Health too. So I'm trying to really, to really separate the two. How many years have we had a medical director with, working with our EMS?
I couldn't hear what your question was.
How many years have we had a medical director for the fire department?
So we've had a medical director. It's a state law that we have to operate under a medical director's license. And I believe that we started EMS service in nineteen ninety-six. Am I right on that one?
Yes.
I see somebody shaking their head back there. You know, I left for a while, so I couldn't quite remember when we started that process. And our original medical director was Dr. Wayne Lee. And then we transitioned to Dr. El Sanati. And then when Dr. El Sanati passed away, that went to Dr.
Dr. Menendez, okay.
And then now we're trying to make that change.
All right, so since we've started using a medical director, we have used the head of the ER at Broward Health.
I don't know that Dr. Lee was the medical director, was the medical director of the ER.
Okay. Was he Broward Health, do you think?
Yeah, I think he was at Broward. Back then, it was Broward General.
Broward General. So, so you understand why some of us too are maybe struggling a little bit with breaking a longstanding relationship? And once again, I'm trying to make a decision based on facts, and I don't even know where I'm standing right now. I'm still fifty-fifty like I was earlier. So I'm trying, and I appreciate what you're saying. You know, I, I just, it's hard for me to say there isn't value in a longstanding relationship, probably because I'm a politician and my whole life revolves around longstanding relationships. So it's, it's hard for me to separate those two, but I'm trying to because you're telling me, you know, I have to. So I'm just so fifty-fifty, it's hard. I have to hear from the rest of the Commissioners. And I, I have to also trust your, your advice and your guidance. Like Vice Mayor said, you know, I probably would have, would have hit me a little bit better if I heard maybe he did something wrong or he had a bad review or something. But to say we want to move in a different direction, maybe there's new technology, maybe, you know, something you've researched. I know you know your job. And so I, I, it's, it's just hard. I'm still, I'm still stuck.
So I do want to say something. First of all, that longstanding relationship with Broward Health System has been in place long before we were even in EMS transport system. It will continue for eternity, as long as both of us are in business, right? Long after I am well gone, I promise that. But I also think that, you know, sometimes, just like bringing it, bringing me in as, you know, the new chief and coming again from the outside, even though I started here, I bring new ideas, and I bring new direction, and I revitalize the organization, and, and I'm aware of new technologies, and I'm more proactive. And that's what we're looking for with Dr. Roach. Really, it's not that Dr. Menendez and Dr. Brooks did anything wrong. It's just that they were more status quo, and it's time for us to up the game. It's time for us to take advantage of the technology and the knowledge and the abilities that are out there. And like, like it's, like Stephen Shaw said, it is, it's like getting into mobile integrated healthcare. And how do we use that to reduce the number of responses that we make to those what we call frequent flyers? So that's, that's where we're trying to go. We are not, our relationship probably, and I had conversations with the CEO, Heather Hablekak, I think that's how I say her last name. And we had lunch together and we talked, and we, we know that we can just strengthen the relationship as we become more and more progressive. And that's what we're looking to do.
Well, I'm sure if, if we choose to move forward in a different direction tonight, we would all take the opportunity to really thank Dr. Menendez for all the service he has provided. And it's not that we're not happy with him, and we believe he's an amazing doctor, and he has served people in our community, many people in our own families, very well. And, you know, I just, I just hope he really understands that. And I know he's listening, and I hope he knows we all appreciate him. So it's hard when you do, you know, know someone's a good doctor, and you really appreciate them. It's hard to, it's hard to fire them, you know, that's kind of.
Well, and I don't, you know, and maybe we don't look like it as it's, it's, it's being fired. It's just, we're segueing and we're transitioning to the next level.
Right.
And he will still be there. I know that he will still provide us good service. I have no doubt that he will still be the great doctor that he is.
And I, I agree with that statement. He will certainly continue to provide great service. So that's probably it for me right now.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have any questions of the chief? I was going to invite Dr. Roach to speak.
Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just want to, I had a question because it says on our cam that this is a two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-three-year total. What are we currently paying with Dr. Menendez for the three-year contract?
With Dr. Menendez, the contract is a hundred-and-fifty thousand for three years.
Okay, that's, that's, that's a significant increase. Why?
The increase is because we'll get more service from Dr. Roach. We will have more hands-on training. We will have more leadership, and that's, and that's, and actually, what we're paying Dr. Roach is even far less than what other entities are paying their medical directors. It's really not that expensive in that world.
I want to follow up on a couple of things that Commissioner Moritas expressed, because this has been a troubling one for me as well. And I've heard everything, and Chief Kerr and Chief Shaw, please know how much I respect you. We had a meeting about this, how much I respect fire rescue. But things that I'm hearing tonight, they're just, they're just not making sense to me. I love change, but I don't believe in change for change's sake. I don't know why we feel that Broward Health can't do mobile integrated healthcare, why they can't be progressive. I haven't heard any of those rationales. I don't know why we can't, I'm using a lot of your words here. I don't know why we can't take it to the quote "next level" with Dr. Menendez and Broward Health with that technology. And then what troubles me is when I asked Dr. Menendez in the beginning, if everyone, if anyone ever sat down with him and said, you know, this is the direction we'd like to go to. We'd like to try X, Y, and Z. We would like to be able to do this. What do you think? But to hear that no one's ever had a conversation with our medical director, to hear that no one's ever had a conversation about the new direction that we'd like to go in, that troubles me. I mean, tonight, we're doing a pay-for-performance review with our city manager, where we have an opportunity to chime in, to let him know what's good, let him know what's bad. And that's the way it usually works in the workplace. If, if there's something that's troubling an employer, they usually will sit down and have that conversation with someone. So, I mean, that, that's, if you can address that, when it comes to, I know there's some more speakers going to speak, so I'll let that happen. And then I'll wrap up my comments when the Commission discusses this. But maybe you could just address some of that for me. That would be, that would be so helpful.
So first of all, we're not making change for change's sake. And the things that we are going to implement or want to implement, like mobile integrated healthcare, requires collaboration from all the hospital entities, as well as the medical director and other medical directors in the system in Broward County.
And why can't that hap, and why can't that happen with Broward Health?
It is going to happen with Broward Health. They'll be part of that. That's what I keep trying to explain is, is that.
No, but I mean, why can't it happen under the medical directorship of Dr. Menendez?
Because he isn't able to provide that type of leadership. I've been trying to be non-negative, I guess. I'm trying to avoid the negativity. But I can tell you that I did not get the leadership during the pandemic that I needed from Dr. Menendez. I haven't gotten the leadership that I need from Dr. Menendez. I haven't gotten the leadership that I need from Dr. Menendez when it comes to being proactive and taking a look at what is some of the new technology out there. And, you know, I just didn't want to get into all the little things that haven't gotten done under his leadership.
So when you were unhappy with the pandemic and you just mentioned those issues, did you ever have a conversation with Dr. Menendez?
Yes, I did.
You did? And you told him exactly why you were unhappy?
I did.
Okay. And what was the response?
There, there wasn't a response. That was the problem.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the, of the chief? And the chief? Okay, Dr. Roach?
Before you go there, we had, Joanne Smith was scheduled.
Was Joanne back on?
She is back on. So if we could grab her and then.
Okay, Joanne, are you there? Joanne?
She is. She's been recognized. Joanne, star six, please, star six.
Joanne Smith?
We have recognized her. She's just not coming off of mute. Just one more time for Joanne Smith, star six.
Only once, twice? Okay, we'll move on. All right, let's move on. Dr. Roach, could you please come up to the podium? Do you have a few words you'd like to share with us? Good evening and thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity of coming up here and speaking tonight. I originally wasn't prepared to, to talk on this. I came mostly to answer questions, but I am grateful for the opportunity to speak. Just to introduce myself, I'm the Chairman of the Emergency Department for the Emergency Medicine Departments at Cleveland Clinic Florida and the Regional Chairman. I'm also the Chairman of the, the Broward Sheriff's Office and Sunrise Fire Rescue. So with that said, you know, I want to just say, as I was sitting here listening to the physicians, I can't help but say how commendable each and every physician was as they were talking about Dr. Menendez. I think it's commendable that they did that and for their colleague. The reason I say that is because I grew up, so to speak, at Broward General and Broward Health. And I worked seven years at the Trauma Center and then I went to Broward Health Coral Springs to become the Medical Director there in that emergency department. So I have a profound love for Broward Health and, and I think it's great that they support him. This, tonight, I think we're talking about, and I think the difference has to be, we have to, you know, sort of see the difference between running an emergency department, which I am a medical director of Cleveland Clinic, and running a pre-hospital organization. I think that's where the difference is. I'm currently, as I said, very involved with pre-hospital. This is a passion of mine and really looking at every single aspect of chance survival, from dispatch to the way paramedics perform CPR, maximizing efficiency, and really looking at quality and efficiency in healthcare is my mission for my, my career and my life. So I love it. I think that what's happening in the pre-hospital setting with respect to medical directorship, you know, I became the medical director of Broward Sheriff's Office, now, and then Sunrise. And I'm honored to be considered for Fort Lauderdale. I think in all of this, the reason why this is so important to me is because I get to impact, you know, literally millions of people by the protocols and the training. And as you can see here, as I sit here and listen to the, the fire chief and the EMS chief, they're such honorable people. As you're asking the questions, they don't want to say anything negative. They want to be positive. They want to say positive things, which is exactly where I stand. I want to be positive. I think Dr. Menendez is a great doctor. I think he's a great leader in a lot of ways. But I think there's also a specific aspect that they're asking, looking for in a medical director, which as I said, I'd be honored to, to have that privilege and to do that. I consider the job as a medical director to be a servant. And I serve the community, I serve our citizens, and I serve the fire chief. The fire chief's vision is really my, is my vision to, to, to really promote that and to serve and to do everything I can do to really help her in her responsibility to keep our citizens safe. So lastly, I'll just say thank you for this opportunity and for the consideration. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Doctor. Anyone have any questions of Dr. Roach?
Yeah, I do. Mayor, please. This is Ben.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Hi, Dr. Roach, how you doing?
Good, sir.
Good. I don't, I don't think we've ever met, but I was looking at your resume. I thought I was busy. You definitely have a lot going on, which is great. So you're the Regional Chairman of Emergency Services at Cleveland Clinic, right?
Yes.
You're the Medical Director for Sunrise Fire. You're Chairman and Director of the Emergency Department at Cleveland Clinic. You're the Broward Sheriff's Office Fire Rescue Medical Officer, right?
Yes.
Have I missed anything?
I think you got it all.
Okay, that's a lot and, and this would be another, another role. So what's, what's the secret? How do you do it all?
Well, as I said, I love what I do. I'm passionate about it. And for me, this isn't work. I mean, every day I get to spend time with the paramedics, training, getting on the ambulances and riding with them. I love it. I mean, I, it's hard to keep me away from the emergency department. It's hard to keep me away from the, from the EMS folks. So I have a genuine love for that. And, you know, it's just, it's not really work for me, sir.
Okay, what's the, what's the advantage or disadvantage to someone who's medical director of, of several organizations all at once? Is that a positive for, for an organization or a negative?
Well, I think that there's economy of scale when you look at, you know, rating protocols as we've done for Broward Sheriff's Office and, and just looking at the medicine that's practiced, you know, for the, for the agencies. I think there's, there's streamlining, as Chief Shaw mentioned, you know, having an app and a website that, you know, puts all the protocols together and organizes this stuff. As time goes on, you know, the more you do something, the better you get at it. So I think there's something to be said about that. As far as, you know, there's many places where they would prefer that the medical director was not a part of the receiving facility. And really that's because you want to have an unbiased approach. I represent the city of Fort Lauderdale, not any individual hospital system. So whatever's the benefit for our community and for the fire service, that's what I'm going to help and promote. So I would love to have relationships with Broward Health and all of the initiatives, but also Holy Cross or other hospitals that interact with this city. It's really an all the above, not, not to separate out any individual hospital system.
Okay, great. And if Broward Health, Chief Kerr is telling us Broward Health receives about, you know, 65% of our, our calls. So that's obviously very important. Broward Health is very important to our community. So how will you really understand Broward Health by not being part of Broward Health?
Well, so as I said, I, I worked at Broward Health for 10 years. I'm very, you know, Broward Health was, it's like my first love is a hospital system and I really appreciated that, that hospital system. And I've been the medical director for the Broward Sheriff's Office for four years. The two of the top three hospitals that we deliver to are Broward Health Medical Center and Broward Health North. So nothing has changed in the last four years. And I've always reached out to the hospital system to constantly, you know, work with them to improve, have the initiatives and whatever can be done, there's a, you know, there's definitely an open-ended invitation from my end for any initiative that's, that's, you know, for the hospital. And so I make a commitment to you that, that that would not change. As a matter of fact, I think it could get better. I think it's going to get better, you know, with this relationship.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I do have a few questions for Dr. Roach. Thank you. Dr. Roach, nice to meet you. And, and I hear only good things about you. Like Commissioner Sorensen, I will be honest, I am a little concerned. So you have, you, you have three different medical directorships that you're dealing with right now?
Yes, sir. I will say that just for the record, I think it should be noted that Dr. Menendez was also the Medical Director of Broward Sheriff's Office, Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue and Sunrise Fire Rescue. And he's, and he was the Medical Director for Tamarack. So he held four positions and I don't think that was an issue. I think that Dr. Menendez is capable of doing that. I certainly am.
Okay, do you have, do you practice or have privileges at any Fort Lauderdale hospitals?
No, I don't. I choose to practice medicine at the Cleveland Clinic. That's my preference. And the other question that has come up is, emergency medicine physicians don't have admitting privileges. So I, I, when I practiced for 10 years at Broward Health, I didn't have admitting privileges. That doesn't exist for emergency medicine physicians. As I said, I'm the Chairman of the Cleveland Clinic Emergency Department and I don't have admitting privileges there. That's not what an emergency medicine doctor does.
Would you think, is it your opinion that perhaps being the county, you're the county EMS director, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And also in the Sheriff's Office?
This, yeah, both are the same.
Does that, does that present any kind of conflict of interest with the city? I know that sometimes we try to separate ourselves from some county services. Do you see that as a problem?
No, I don't think that's a problem. And I don't think it was a problem when Dr. Menendez held both positions. I think that was perfectly fine.
Okay. That's all I have for you right now, but thank you, Doctor.
Okay, any other questions? Any other questions of Dr. Roach?
Mayor, I've got a question for Chief Kerr whenever is appropriate.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, you got me.
Hey, Chief Kerr, who does the medical, the Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue Medical Director report to?
They report to me.
How often should, how, how often do you expect to have conversations with the, of the medical director?
So my goal and vision now is, is that we meet like at least every couple of weeks, but they will be involved in the organization in other capacities, maybe not directly with me. But anytime too, if we had an issue that we needed to discuss, you know, we would always be meeting and to discuss.
And has that been your, your expectation and, and behavior previously as well? To strive for regular communication?
It has. And we just, I don't think that it ever really happened.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor. That's, that's the only question I have.
Mayor, can I follow up with the chief while she's there so she doesn't have to keep going up and down?
That's okay. I need the exercise.
There you go. Thank you, Chief. I have a question because I know you mentioned there was an issue during the pandemic. I remember back when we were having all those issues with the cruise ships. And at that time, I was actually hearing really good things that Dr. Menendez was very integral to that COVID response when we were dealing with the cruise ships issues. So I, I don't know what specifically you're talking about, but I, I, you know, we've heard tonight from the head of trauma, the adult and pediatric ICU, all very concerned about, you know, how this will affect our care for patients. Does any of this concern you at all?
It doesn't because this changing the medical director is, a medical director provides pre-hospital care and direction. The, the hospital and the ICU is the end result of coming into a possibly, possibly coming into the ER, right? And so it, it doesn't concern me because it's not what we're concerned with. We're concerned with what happens out on the street and how we take care of the patient out there. And how do we prevent maybe some of these cardiac arrests or how do we prevent some of this trauma? It's not about what happens is necessarily as much in the ER. We will still continue to have that same relationship with ICU. We'll still have the same relationship with the hospitals and the ERs in the various hospitals that we transport to. And like I said, 65% goes to Broward Health, but the rest go to other hospitals and other ERs. And it's the same thing. And, and just like Dr. Roach said, when Dr. Menendez was the Medical Director for four different agencies, it didn't change anything. Now it's somebody else. It hasn't changed. The, 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 the goal is, is to get better with our medical director.
Let me ask you though, because we heard tonight from some of the physicians about a concern of continuity of care. In other words, from the street and then every process after that. How do you feel about that concern that was expressed to us about that continuity of care?
So if there's a concern that there's continuity of care, it is it only at Broward Health? I mean, what about BSO? What about the other agencies that transport to Broward Health? And they have a different medical director that does not reside at Broward Health system? It's the same thing. It, it's not, it doesn't really impact continuity of care. We are pre-hospital. We are not hospital.
Okay, I have a question because I heard, I've heard different percentages this evening. You say 65. I've heard higher from some of the physicians. Is 65% include or not include Imperial Point?
It's 65. I believe that the number, I went through this the other day. No, right? I think it's 65% only is to Broward Health system.
All of the hospitals, including Imperial Point, is only 65%, really?
No.
Sounds low to me.
I'm, I'm looking around to see.
Okay.
I don't, I don't honestly know the answer to that question.
Okay.
I just know that the number I asked for was 65, about 65% of the transports go to, I believe it's Broward Medical Center.
Okay, well, okay, but is that so 65% to Broward Medical Center downtown or all of the hospitals in Broward Health?
She said she didn't know the answer.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. I guess you're her attorney now too. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I, I appreciate it.
Chief, can you, can you hang out, hang out right there for a moment? I want to. Mayor, Joanne Smith is trying to get through, but she says she cannot unmute for some reason.
Star six?
Star six?
She texted me what she wanted to say. So at some point when it's appropriate, I'll just read what she's.
Yeah, she texted me as well. So I can, I can read that now.
Go ahead.
Mayor, is that all right? So, and I think there's a question in here too, maybe to Chief Kerr. So, so this is Joanne Smith, who's unable to mute right now, unmute right now. She says, "I believe the medical director should work in our city and interact with our medics directly. Dr. Menendez has had 15-plus years of working in this community. He's a proven solid medical director. He's responsive to our medics and community. I've spoken to some of the rank and file, PD and fire, and they want him to stay. He answers questions. He provides information regarding continuity of care for both medical and trauma. The new doctor has no privileges in the city and will not be able to interact with our medics. That relationship is so important. Dr. Menendez has created protocols that are just for, for Lauderdale, not tailored to any other cities. Do you want a doctor who knows you and knows your needs? Or do we just want a doctor who's getting more money than Dr. Menendez to take care of us? Thank you. He's not licensed to practice here. How can you, how can he interact with our people?" So I guess that's, that's a question maybe to you. So that's Joanne's comment. And maybe Chief, that license to practice here, maybe if you just want to touch on that again?
I'd, I'd like to answer that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the practice of pre-hospital medicine involves getting on the ambulance and riding in the city with the paramedics. That's the practice of medicine. I have this equivalent board certification as Dr. Menendez. And I will spend, as I, as I have a pattern of doing, spending a lot of time with the EMS folks. So again, we have to really start to think about the difference between being a medical director in the hospital versus being a medical director in the pre-hospital. The pre-hospital is physically going out into the city and practicing medicine. I will do that and have done that.
And you're licensed to do that?
Of course.
And you're, and do you have, do you have hospital privileges with Broward Medical Center?
No.
I think that's what they were getting.
But it would be customary to not have, I mean, emergency medicine physicians don't have privileges at multiple hospitals or out of the one system. You could be a medical, you could have privileges within Broward Health system, but you wouldn't have, it'd be very rare to have privileges at Broward Health, an HCA facility, Cleveland Clinic. That's just not the way, that's just not the way the practice is.
So do you have, do you have privileges within Broward Health system or just not at all?
No, because.
In Broward Health system?
In order to work at the Broward Health system, you have to work for a private company called Envision. And you would have to go through that private publicly traded company in order to work for the hospital. So all the emergency medicine physicians, they don't work for Broward Health. They work for a publicly traded company called Envision.
So they farmed it out?
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a entity.
Okay.
So the idea that they work at Broward Health is also misleading.
Mayor, I have a question for Dr. Roach while he's up there.
Sure.
Thank you. Dr. Roach, with all of the other positions that you're holding right now and you just mentioned the concept. now, and you just mentioned the concept of pre-hospital medicine, how many trucks do you actually envision yourself riding in, in the city of Fort Lauderdale with everything else that you have going on?
Well, I, I would spend it once in one day a week. Usually it'll probably be, I think in our discussions, most likely Tuesdays, and I'll do whatever Chief Shaw has on the agenda. That's what we'll do. Currently, I spend Thursdays with the Broward Sheriff's Office and whatever the EMS chief asks me to do, that's what I do. So typically ride at least one to two days a month.
Now, you just answered a question before that you do not have privileges at Broward Health. Are you familiar with the policy there? Do you need to have privileges at Broward Health to interact with a patient in ER, for example?
Well, the patients, again, they're, when we, when we're called to a patient's home in the community, they belong to the Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue and the medical director. Until we transition care to the hospital, they belong to the medical director of that fire rescue agency. They don't belong, so I wouldn't be, no, you wouldn't, the EMS medical director doesn't practice medicine at the receiving facility. There is, the paramedics that work under the license of the medical director practice in the pre-hospital setting. We, we're still, I'm trying to make that distinction, and I think that's, that's where, I think we're having some, some difficulty with this. Because again, it's wonderful to be the medical director of the hospital in Broward County, but that's two separate things. The medical director of EMS is the medical director from the time they pick the patient up in the community until they transition care into the emergency department.
Okay, I, I still think that.
Go talk to Roach.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, keep, no, go ahead, keep going, Steve.
No, I, I, I still, I'll wait for that answer lately, but I've been getting other people telling me information that maybe it's as high as 80% of our patients actually go to the Broward Health System. But I, I, I just, it's tough for me to understand that a medical director would not have privileges in our safety net hospital. I, I'll get into this more when we have our discussion after all of this, when we close public hearing, but I, I think it does matter, all of this matters, because I think a medical, medical director creates a lot of these protocols. So it's all yours, Commissioner McKenzie, go ahead.
I just wanted to bring some clarity to my own understanding. So, and, and I guess Dr. Roach or Chief Kerr could, could answer this question. So my first question would be, we are talking about an individual, not an institution like a hospital. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So this medical director that we are, that we currently have and are looking towards moving in a different direction is what we, what I would call a qualifier of our fire rescue service. He qualifies us to provide our pre-care services.
That's correct. We work under that medical director's license.
So, so that license qualifies us to go to the, the call, pick up the patient, transport to AER, didn't have to be Broward Health, but whichever ER is designated for that particular medical issue, we transport to any one of those places, A, B, C, or D, and we then sign the patient over to that institution. So at that point, it doesn't matter if he can, because he, he or Menendez will not be allowed to go past the point of transfer. It is now handed over to another doctor, am I correct?
That's correct.
So what we basically talk about here when we look at these, this position, look for someone who's going to qualify us, provide training, work with us on protocol and initiatives to make our department better. And what you're saying is you need someone who can do this better than what we have been doing in the past, and this is why you're making this recommendation tonight.
That is correct.
So I don't know why we're getting so far in the reason. I don't, I'm not questioning anybody's reasoning. What I'm saying is, we were here a few years ago, a mayor questioned the same medical director. I'm not taking anything from the one we have now or the one that we're looking to have, but I know that by the charter, city manager, city auditor, city attorney, and the city clerk is who, who I can have a say-so in, in hiring or, or firing. So when our directors or, or, or staff is recommending a better tool for the toolkit, I like to listen to, to those recommendations and, and try to assist. And I think all I'm, I'm asked, being asked to do tonight is, is approve a contract, not so much interview, or, or steer this in one direction or the other. Because like, for example, do you ever buy new fire equipment, trucks, what have you, tires, or, do you?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, I'm asking, do you ever buy new fire trucks and new equipment?
Yeah, of course.
And, and you go out and you do the research, and you say, hey, I want this fire truck, or I want this, that's a scope, or I want this, no, whatever is going to make our fire rescue better, right?
That's correct.
So now you're saying, this is going to make us better, and this is why I would like to have commissioners and, and, and mayors. So I don't have a problem with your recommendation. So I just wanted some clarity that we're just talking about an individual and not a institution.
And that is absolutely correct. We're talking about an individual. We work under that individual's license. That individual provides us the protocols on which we operate. That individual provides quality, continuing quality, insurance, and improvement. That's what we do with our medical director.
Thank you for that clarity.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else in the commission that wanted, there's a couple of people that have since signed up to speak, but I don't know whether we want to keep going on this.
I, I moved to close public hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, folks, that.
Second.
We really need to move on with this. So does any, any commission, I'd like to say something, but I'd like to defer to the other commissioners first before I say.
I'd like to make a couple of comments, Mayor.
Sorenson, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so Broward Health Medical Center holds a special place in my heart. Both our daughters were born there. I live blocks from it. Very important, very important staff and, and facility and a critical part of our community. The only safety net hospital. It's just vital. So our relationship with Broward Health is vital to our city. So when I started understanding more about this possible change, one of the first things I wanted to do is call up top level administrators at North Broward, which is the entity that oversees all of the, the whole Broward system, to say, if a change is made here, how does that impact the city of Fort Lauderdale's relationship with the entire North Broward system, the entire Broward Health system, and the specific hospital? Because I, I am not making a change, or I'm not going to support a change if it's going to negatively impact our relationship. The top two administrators that I talked to said absolutely will not change anything about the big picture relationship with the city of Fort Lauderdale. It won't change anything with the Broward Medical Center's relationship with the city of Fort Lauderdale. Now, that was guaranteed to me by, you know, highest levels of the organization. So that's, I just want to share that because I think that's an important point, just to kind of consider as we're talking through this. And the second, just a purely personal standpoint for me is, I'm a big, I'm a big believer in our city staff. I'm a big believer in our, our city manager and the department heads that he's hired. I'm a big believer in Chief Kerr. I think she's done a great job and continues to do a great job. I'm a big believer in Dr. Menendez. I've sat in the, I've stood in the ER with him in front of, you know, some, some very difficult situations where he has administered amazing care to patients, to families, and I've seen it firsthand. He has amazing heart and is amazing individual. For me, it's not a, an evaluation of, of Dr. Menendez or Dr. Roach. For me, it's a trust in our fire chief that I think she's doing the right thing, doing the right thing for the organization, and I'm going to support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the commission want to add their comments?
I would like to add a few comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks. First of all, I, I do want to address what Commissioner McKenzie said. I, I don't think that this is the equivalent of buying a tire or a fire truck. This is a lot more important than that, and this holds a lot more significance than that. I've been hearing from a lot of my constituents, some of whom are actually physicians, and everyone is quite, quite concerned about this. You know, to think that pre-hospital care is not connected intimately with the receiving hospital, it's not reasonable. It does not make sense to me. You know, the foundation philosophy of pre-hospital care is that chain of care, and I think this will weaken us. I, I, I just think that, you know, we're not talking about technology or an app or mobile integrated health care. For me, this is a lot larger than this. Some of these points have been made already this evening, but I want a medical director as a city commissioner in Fort Lauderdale who lives, practices, and has privileges in the city of Fort Lauderdale. It's as clear as that to me. I so, as Commissioner Sorenson said, respect our fire people, our Chief Kerr, Chief Shaw, but you know, I don't always know what's going on with everybody, with interpersonal relationships and politics, and trust me, that happens everywhere. So I don't know that. I can only discuss what I know and what I think is important to our city. We are city commissioners now thinking of hiring a medical director from Weston, who has no privileges in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Someone needs to help me understand why that is okay, because for me, I am totally not comfortable with it. I'm not comfortable with the fact that Dr. Menendez was not sat down and given reasons to improve or ways to improve, or given the direction of our fire department, how they wanted to see us move into the future, be more progressive, whatever that means, take it to the next level is what I heard tonight also, whatever that means. But those can be broken down into very concrete issues that people can work on. I want a medical director who is local and sees our issues every single day. Broward is the trauma center. I think it's up to 80% of the people go there, not the 60% that are transported there. That continuity of care is very, very important to me. This is our safety net system. This is our local community hospital. I do not want to disrupt this. I do not think that this is a smart move at all. If not, why don't we just farm out everything to outside of the city of Fort Lauderdale? I still haven't really heard what's wrong. I haven't heard enough to understand why we will spend $70,000 more on the contract. And I too, like Joanne Smith, have heard from people, boots on the ground, police people, fire people, who think this is not a good idea. So again, I, I know I'm sounding a little, you know, hyper about this, but I just think that we need to take a step back and think about what we are doing here, and especially to our community who feels very safe right now with the system that is in place. And I have no rationale to tell someone how I voted to move our medical director to Weston. So that's all I have to say. I think the rest has been said. I want to thank all the physicians who were on the line tonight and gave us their expert opinions. And I, I think that they are the physicians. While I respect our fire department is so well, they are not doctors. They are not physicians. So I, I will have to break with our staff on this. I typically don't do that, but I feel very strongly that we will be making a very bad decision to, to give this to a medical director from outside of our city with no privileges to practice in our city. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, I just, I want to make a comment, Vice Mayor. I appreciate you coming up with your own decision based on my understanding of, of how the fire department works. And I was just using an analogy, and I'm glad it worked to help you make a decision, but my decision is based upon the same outreach that Professor Sorenson did with talking with the professionals in that institution at Broward Health, and there's no negative impact if we switch. So just want to give you a little bit more clarity since you lean heavily on my understanding of how things work.
No, I, I, I really don't, Commissioner McKenzie, because.
But you use me as a reference, and you use me as a reference to say, no, I, I'm in support of staff, number one. Number two, all ERs, most ERs are operated by independent agencies. So even those doctors don't work for those hospitals. They work for a company, and they're assigned to those hospitals in that ER, which has a responsibility of whatever entity has that contract with them. So if the CEO of Broward Health is telling me that there's no negative impact in making this change, and I'm good with that, and I don't need your understanding to make my decision on what I want to do. So just want to let you know that I'm glad that you lean on my understanding to make your decisions.
Well, actually, I don't lean on your understanding to make a decision. No, I want to finish this, Mayor. I was only referencing your comment about buying tires and a truck. You know, it's interesting to me how you can talk and talk, and you can give your opinion when you want, but then if somebody else has an opinion, it's no longer good. Today.
Yeah, I don't, I don't make you a reference. I'm just saying, you don't need me, you don't need me, you don't need me for you to pay. That's all I'm saying.
No, I'm talking right now.
Your own understanding.
Today you told the mayor, today you told the mayor, don't compare Juneteenth to Stonewall, because you can't compare one to something else.
And I meant that, Stephen.
And then you said, and then you said, and then you said basically that LGBTQ people choose to be LGBTQ.
I did not say that. If you want to have a conversation about this.
Yes, you did. I heard you say that.
Stephen, if you have the conversation you really want to have with me, do not use me for your own understanding on why you want to make your mind. Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Thank you for leaning on my understanding.
I don't lean on, I don't lean on your understanding, but do not lecture me, Commissioner McKenzie. Do not lecture me.
Okay, let us move on. Okay, Commissioner Moritas.
Yes. I agree with Vice Mayor. I agree with Commissioner Sorenson. I, I've benefited from a great medical care with Broward Health. I understand also that it seems like we should have our medical director in our city and at our trauma center. But I believe that the medical director needs to work with our EMS, and he reports to Chief Kerr. So most importantly, that relationship has to work. This is not a relationship between me and the medical director. It's not a relationship between my value of Broward Health, Dr. Menendez. I, I value both the hospital and the doctor. This is what our EMS has researched. It's what they're asking for. I know they made the decision because they want to provide the best care for our residents. So in my mind, they're still picking up our residents, and they're making a decision under the medical guidance of a medical director of their choosing, who they can work with. And it's really important to have, as much as I've talked about relationships, I have to evaluate what relationship is the most important. I have relationships with so many doctors in Broward Health also. Said I was born and raised here. My husband was born and raised here. We were both born, I thought, actually a holy cross. He was a Broward general. I mean, we, we're just, the city of Fort Lauderdale is in our blood. So you have to understand, coming from Weston, because that was really the Everglades for a long time, that it's hard for us to understand why you bring value. Honestly, it is. It's going to be hard for our residents to read about it in the paper tomorrow, why you bring value, because you're not the city of Fort Lauderdale. And we love our city so much. This is why we're here today as representatives of our citizens. But I have to value most importantly, the relationship that the medical director will have with our chief and our EMS. So although I was 50/50 all along, though I will continue to value Dr. Menendez and Broward Health, I have to go with the decision of my chief, because they will be the ones working with you.
All right.
That's it.
All right, I think everyone has weighed in on this. I just want to say a couple of things. You know, a lot of good things were said tonight by all the commissioners, and I appreciate everyone taking such a passionate interest in this, because obviously, the result is going to be what is in the best interests of our community. And those who either live here or visit here, who may encounter an unfortunate moment in their life where they must need hospital. And those who either live here or visit here, who may encounter an unfortunate moment in their life where they must need hospitalization. What tonight has also taught me is that we have a lot of talent in this community. We have a lot of good folks, either working as physicians or those connected with the hospital administration. And I want to thank everybody. I don't think anything tonight is in any way intended to cast aspersions on anyone's talent, or conduct, or experience, or anything in between. I just think that, you know, our medical staff and our medical community is bar none. And knowing so many of you in that community, I have to say that I feel honored to be a part of that community. So let me just simply say that I'm not a type of person that believes that we should try to fix something that isn't broken. And I think that there are a lot of good things said about Dr. Menendez. But I'm not sure that's what we're really here about. We're not really here to fix something that's broken. I think we're here to try to do something new for our community, something that will enhance what we already have in existence. And I'm listening to our fire chief, who seems to feel that that can only be achieved by selecting a new medical director. I was getting the impression from some of the discussion tonight that there's a feeling that the medical director, you know, if someone experiences trauma, and the medical director, I guess, is expected to, you know, rush to that scene, and then ride shotgun in the ambulance, and walk into the hospital with that person and be able to assist in the treatment. I don't think that's what a medical director does. I think a medical director is more about strategic planning, more about policymaking, and more about, you know, direction rather than treatment per se. I think that while we have great treatment facilities here in Broward Health, I'm sure the treatment facilities in other hospitals are just as good and equally as good. So I'm looking at it more from a strategic planning perspective and a policy implementation perspective, not so much a treatment perspective. So the fact that Dr. Roach doesn't have privileges with Broward Health should not be a deterrent, because he's not going to be actually treating people. And that's, I mean, he could, but that's not really what he's being selected for tonight. He would be, if his contract is approved, he would be chosen to serve as a medical director, not a practicing physician. Being a practicing physician is important, so it gives you experience and background to know what policies might best be implemented. But again, I think it's more of a policy direction as opposed to a treatment position. So I have to agree with Commissioner Maritis and others who have said tonight that we really need to rely on the decision of our staff and our fire chief. I think that they're going to be working with this individual and trying to develop new programs. I respect our fire chief and her understanding of what's necessary here. I think we ought to give it a go. I want to say I have complete faith in her decision-making and those of her staff and associates. And so for that reason, I'm going to support the measure. And I think we should take it to a vote unless anyone else has anything final to say.
Mayor, I do. Can we amend the contract to one year, just to see how it's going? Or we have to do a three-year contract?
I don't know. How does that work? You can't do it? What is the, want to come up, I mean, what would be the kick-out clauses here? I'm sorry?
I'm going to have to pull it up and look and let you...
Okay.
Because unlike what we've just gone through, where Dr. Menendez was not given an opportunity to even know that there was something not right, I would like to be able to evaluate in a year how it's going with the new medical director.
Well, this is not up for us to evaluate on an annual basis. I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, it's beyond the terms of the contract, but also there would be, and Chris can correct me, but there's obviously a fiscal impact. It affects more than just the language of the contract.
Fine. And can I just request from Chief Kerr, reports on this on a yearly basis at least of how it's going? I'd like to know exactly what's happening, what's different, what new technologies have been implemented, how we are dealing with mobile integrated healthcare, and how we have progressed, and how we have taken this to the next level. I'd like to see at least a report each year. Thank you.
I agree. That's good.
I'd like to move the motion.
Okay, we have, the item has been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. And this cannot be transferred, transformed into an annualized contract. It's a three-year contract, correct?
It is, Mr. Mayor, but I'm reading the termination language, which says that either party may terminate for any reason at any time by providing 90 days written notice.
Yeah. So there is a kick-out clause, Vice Mayor.
Okay, well, that's good, but we'll be getting reports, and maybe we won't have to do any kicking. We'll see.
All right, so I want everyone to feel comfortable about what we're doing. I know we're all going to have different comfort levels here tonight. But I just, you know, I personally feel comfortable knowing that our fire chief has made this decision, and I want to be here tonight to support her and her staff. So, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll. Vice Mayor Glassman?
No.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales? Yes, and the item is approved. Thank you, everybody, tonight. Good luck, Dr. Roach. Looking forward to your annual assessments while working with our police, excuse me, our fire chief. And we appreciate all the good work, you know, you plan to do for our community. So thank you. And thank you, Dr. Menendez, for the years of service you've done on behalf of our community. I know you'll continue to do so. And thank you for everything you've done in the past on behalf of the city of Fort Lauderdale. Okay, let us move on. So we've done all the consent agenda items. So we'll now move on to motions. M1, motion approving an event agreement and music exemption for a post-wedding ceremony at Chabad Lubavitch of Fort Lauderdale. I think the reason for this motion is because the good rabbi wants to have a party in the parking lot past the...
It's going to be quite the shindig, yes. It's going to go on till midnight.
On to midnight.
Yes.
So you'll be hearing Chabad Nagila at midnight.
Yes. We've let the condos know. So I support it, and I will move it unless anyone wants to talk about it.
Anyone else want to talk about it?
Yeah, Commissioner Maritis, the only question I had is just, and I assured folks that, I'm sure you had done the outreach of, are neighbors okay with this? And I told them I'm sure Commissioner Maritis already did that, and they're fine.
Yes, I myself have not reached out to neighbors, but I did talk with the leadership in the vault, and they have assured me that outreach has happened.
Great, thank you.
Okay, the item has been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who's the seconded? Please call the roll. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes, Mazel Tov.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Opah, yes.
Opah? What do you mean, opah? Get out of here.
It's a Greek celebratory term that can be used at various cultural events.
I'll have to see if they use it at the Chabad Lubavitch ceremony.
It's ecumenical.
Thank you.
Are you going, Vice Mayor?
No, I haven't been doing events, and especially with crowds. I've been told to be very careful, so I'm being very careful.
Let me know if you hear anything from your...
Thank you.
Yes, is my turn?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Trent Hales? Yes, and the motion is approved. Moving on to neighborhood presentations, is Hi Montero here?
Yes, sir.
Hi, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well.
So tonight, you've asked, you've signed up to do a neighborhood presentation, which is a discussion regarding locking the beach access gate north of Point of America between sunset and sunrise. Sunset, sunrise. Oh, we'll save that for the celebration.
There you go.
You have three minutes. Please begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Hi Montero. I'm president of the Point of Americas 2. And I've been in communication with the HOAs and with the Lago Mar Resort. All 13 HOAs in the Lago Mar Resort are in agreement to lock the gate, beach access north of Point of Americas 1, from actually 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. We had said sunset to sunrise, and then I went and had conversations with Harbor Inlet, Harbor Beach, and the Surf Club. And we discussed the idea of locking it between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. However, this afternoon, when I spoke to those three associations, the Inlet, the Harbor Beach, and the Surf Club, they really do not want us to do that. We've got a problem here, sir, and we've had this issue come up before. I've discussed it with Alan, also with Commissioner Sorenson. We need to do something here. I presented it as a spokesperson for the 13 HOAs, let's try this as a pilot for 45 days. Let's lock it between sunset, between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, and let's see what happens in that 45-day period. Do the HOAs in the Lago Resort actually see a decrease in the activities that have caused them to bring this to the attention of the city commission? And on the other side, Harbor Inlet, Harbor Beach, and the Surf Club, can they identify the number of their residents who actually want to go to the beach at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning? And we'll find out what it is that is taking place here. I look at this as a pilot approach to address a security issue and major problems that are taking place on that side of the beach. This is what I would like to recommend at this point, and I spoke to Commissioner Sorenson before I spoke, I'm making this presentation right now. And now I'm bringing it to you, sir, and I bring it to the other commissioners. I'm not the type of person that just wants to sit on my hands and says, oh, well, I guess we're not going to be able to do that. I think we need to be proactive here. And I am suggesting this pilot approach for 45 days to see where we are. Are the activities really decreasing on the beach once we do that, as raised by the 13 HOAs? And who in fact is being affected between these hours at the Inlet, at the Harbor Beach, and at the Surf Club?
All right, where am I going to go at 5:00 in the morning?
Exactly.
Okay, Commissioner Sorenson, do you want to weigh in on this?
Certainly. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Hi, for your presentation. So, yeah, this has been ongoing, you know, healthy discussion. Hi's really helped bring a lot of folks together to talk through it and weigh through the options. Alan, Wallow, and Chris have also been involved, so that Alan has helped, obviously, give us a legal perspective. Basically, we have an easement access there as a city, so it's up to us to determine whether we agree this should be closed or opened at any point. So I think we're making, I think Hi's made good progress in terms of talking with the HOAs and getting some alignment. I think there's more that needs to be done in terms of trying to see if, especially Harbor Beach and Harbor Inlet, were basically opposed to having this closed at all. Seeing if we can keep discussions going with them to see if there can be, to Hi's point, maybe some kind of a pilot or some kind of a trial run to see if something like this may be possible. But we're not there, so I'm not comfortable moving forward with anything until we get better kind of alignment of the HOAs and are able to, you know, bring an idea forward to Alan and Chris, and then ultimately you all, to make sure we're meeting the legal standing, and then, you know, policy-setting standpoint. Mayor?
All right, well, you know, Mr. Montero and the other members of the community, I met with them virtually right before, I remember, I think it was in October. And, you know, we have a problem there. And look, kids like to have fun. They like to do it late. They're messy. They're noisy. It's just part of life. But it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be done at the expense of the quiet enjoyment of other people, which is, I think, what we're now experiencing. And so there has to be a solution to make sure that the people that live in and around that area do not suffer the impact of another person's good time. So I don't want to drag this out for a very long time, but I think we can defer to your request to reach out to the adjacent communities. But I just want, my opinion is, and I hope perhaps the opinion of others here on the commission, that something needs to be done, and we need to do it sooner than later, especially since spring break is about to happen upon us. Season is here, and I'd like to think that we could do something to protect the interests of the people that live in and around that area. Does that seem feasible, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, it seems feasible, but, and it's also just important to remember, some of the needs are, some people like going out there at, you know, early in the morning, late at night. So there's a lot of balancing to do, and I think we can keep talking and see if we can, you know, come together for a compromise.
So, Hi, you're thinking of maybe locking the gates between 12:00, midnight, and 5:00 in the morning?
No, I actually, as you remember, thank you for reminding me, Mr. Mayor, when we spoke in October, we actually wanted to lock it from sunrise to sunset.
Right.
I'm sorry, from sunset to sunrise. And in my conversations with the Inlet and Harbor Beach, I tried to negotiate by saying, let's do it specific hours, 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. That way, if somebody wants to be out there for the sunset, or wants to be out there for the sunrise, they're not going to be affected. We're just asking for seven hours, and let's try it for 45 days. I mean, in life, you can't get everything you want. As I was telling Commissioner Sorenson, the old Rolling Stone song, you can't always get what you want, but if you try some time, you get what you need. Let's try to get, let's move in this direction. Let's be proactive. Let's do something, at least for 45 days, to see how both sides are really affected or assisted.
What do you think about that, Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, again, I'm open to talking about it, but for me, it's important to get the two, you know, huge neighborhood associations in alignment with a possible pilot program, so...
All right, so if you could reach out to them in the next 30 days, and then perhaps in our, at our second meeting in February, we can make a decision and then implement it at that time?
Yeah, the other question, Mayor, and I haven't, because I haven't, I don't know if I've talked, I think I've maybe, I've talked briefly about this with Alan, just the latest update. Alan, is it possible to do, I mean, we're talking about an easement, we're talking about a land right. I mean, is it possible to have a revocable, you know, pilot period to try something like this?
Well, it's not really a revocable, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, basically, we control the area, so it would be up to management, the city, to decide whether they want to do that or not. It's not really, it's not necessarily memorialized in the way of any sort of license or agreement necessarily. It can be somewhat informal, especially in a pilot type of, so since we have the easement, it's, again, there may be some dispute there, which I'm not going to get into, obviously, with Hi. But just assuming, you know, again, that we all agree we have control. I don't foresee us, in fact, I don't even foresee the commission having to formally, they can certainly give guidance to the city manager, but there's no formal vote that needs to occur for this to happen. If you were to go forward with the pilot program, it could just be a matter of giving direction to the city manager to see if he thinks that's something feasible that can be done.
Okay, that helps, Alan. And Mayor, one last question, and Hi can explain this a little bit, but, and Hi, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's a way, Mayor, I think, for if someone wants to go out to the beach during that time, there's like a guarded desk they can go to. Hi, what was that?
Absolutely. The gate house at Point of Americas is literally 150 feet from the beach access gate. And I explained that to the Inlet and to Harbor Beach. If someone really wants your resident, one of your residents wants to go at 3:00 in the morning and sit at the beach, he just has, he or she just has to go to our gate, we'll unlock the gate for him, and they can be out there, and then they can just call us and say, all right, we've been here an hour, we've done our meditation out there, whatever, and we want to leave. And they'll let him back out. So it's not like, even during those seven hours, we're not even prohibiting them from going to the beach or preventing them from going to the beach. We're just trying to get some control over here. And I think this pilot approach, as I said earlier, is going to do two things. Let the 13 HOAs see whether this is really helping us at all, and identify to the other two HOAs, the Inlet and Harbor Beach, who really wants to use that beach between 10:00 and 5:00 AM, 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. That's really it.
Yeah, thanks, Hi. So Mayor, I think we've got some good... So, Mayor, I think we've got some good opportunities to, we'll just, you know, keep driving this and working with Hi and other associations, and we'll report back.
Okay, so if we can report back at the second meeting of February and make a decision, because the thing is, it's not just about creating a rule, it's about enforcement. You know, kids can hike the fence or do something, so we've got to think, you know, if we are going to lock it, got to figure out how we're going to enforce it, so. All right.
Because it's a public beach, this is a public beach, this is public land, so there's a lot of competing interests we've got to balance here.
Well, even on the public beach, we have hours, I mean, you can't, you can't, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, you can't, can you go on Fort Lauderdale Beach twenty-four hours?
Yes.
Mayor, you haven't been out there with me at 3:00 AM?
I guess I'm scared of the dark, I'm scared.
Yeah, but let me go one step further than that and just say that as this discussion is happening, if hours are being discussed, the earliest we could have a park ranger there to do the unlocking of the gate in the morning is six, so talk about six instead of five.
And actually, we would be, we were willing to lock and open the gate at 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. And we suggested that, because we have a guard right there at our entrance of our building. But, and just remember, the difference is, it is a public beach, an area east on that beach, but west of that, the survey shows that it's a private beach. So people have to go over our private beach to get to the public beach. So we need to work together here, the city and the HOAs, for the betterment of everybody.
Good point, okay, all right.
Thank you very much, though, I appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation.
Okay.
And the commissioners.
Thank you, and we'll defer to you, Commissioner Sorenson, and we'll wait to hear back from you.
Yep, thank you, thanks, Hi. Circle back in February, thank you again.
Thank you. Okay, R1, appointment of board and committee members, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Commissioners, for the February second resolution nominations for consensus appointment, Vice Mayor Glassman has nominated Patrick Shavlosky for the Walk of Fame Committee. That would be a reappointment consensus nomination. And then there is one other consensus seat that is currently vacant, and we've been given two nominations for the one seat. One is from Commissioner Sorenson, and that is Ramola Motwani, and one is from Mayor Trentalis, and that is Ina Lee.
Okay, any additions to these recommendations and nominations?
So, Mayor, that particular, you have two nominations for one seat on that consensus appointment.
What were they again?
Ramola Motwani and Ina.
And Ina Lee.
Mayor, I mean, I defer to you.
I abstain.
I defer to you, Mayor, on, you know, who you'd like to put there.
Well, anyone have any thoughts? Commissioner, Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I think you can fight that out between Ramola and Ina, that's, that would be a good duel.
Well, they're both very qualified people, they both express an interest. Can you explain to us what, explain to the commission what the purpose of this board is?
This is the board where they pick the Walk of Fame, it was what we talked about, I think, at the last meeting.
Right.
They make the nominations for, and then the commission approves them.
Well, do I hear a motion?
I have some other names to read, so that'll give you a little time.
Let me ask you this, Mayor, this may be a differentiating factor. Did Ina Lee reach out to you and say, hey, I'd really like to do this?
No, no one has reached out.
Okay, so you just, okay, you just saw her name and thought she'd be good. Because I reached out to Ramola and said, hey, I think you'd be, you know, this would be great and so forth, and.
Hasn't Ina been on this committee?
I'm not certain if she's been on it. She is on another committee right now, and Ramola is not.
Would she have to remove herself from?
No, because you can be on two committees simultaneously.
That's what I thought.
That may be, Mayor, a differentiating factor, then, if, just to, I don't know how frequently Ramola has been on a city commission, a city board.
All right.
Does Ina know she's being considered?
Yes.
Because you told her, okay, sometimes they don't know.
Well, maybe we should give Mrs. Motwani a shot at it this time.
So, I'll move that, I'll move.
Okay, I did nominate Ina, but, you know, in all fairness, maybe we should give Mrs. Motwani a shot this time.
So what we do when we read these consensus appointments, that you have to come to consensus, we put them on the resolution for the next meeting, so there's still a little time, but we'll take the direction to put Ramola on based on your direction right now. And then for the, also consensus nominations for the Insurance Advisory Board, Commissioner Sorenson has nominated, this board is all consensus members, and Commissioner Sorenson has nominated Steve Botkin, Ted Hess, Jonathan Petrillo, Joseph Pachura, and Mark Schwartz, who are coming up to their one-year term. On the Nuisance Abatement Board, also consensus seats, Commissioner Sorenson has nominated Joel Slotnick, and Sustainability Advisory Board, Commissioner Sorenson has nominated Owen Seikley. And the Beach Business Improvement District, this is also a consensus appointment, and the Senesta Representative, Michael Meduris, he's the general manager, he just needs to be reinstated on this one. And then there are also two other individual appointments that names were brought forward for the General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Doug Mead, nominated by Mayor Trentalis, and also a reinstatement for Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Redevelopment Board, Commissioner Sorenson nominates John Hooper for reinstatement. For tonight's resolution, the Beach Business Improvement District Advisory Committee, Patricia Maricola, consensus appointment, representing Bahia Mar, and Code Enforcement Board, Terry Nolan, consensus appointment that was also brought up at the last meeting. Parks, Recs, and Beaches Board, Steffi Pascal, nominated by Mayor Trentalis, Charlie Leekov, nominated by Mayor Trentalis also, and the 2020 Walk of Fame Committee, these are the appointments, these are all reappointments, but these are individually from the commission as opposed to the other two consensus that I noted earlier. Denise Cunningham, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Robert Lockery, nominated by Commissioner Moritas, Lilian Small, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie, George Hanbury, nominated by Commissioner Sorenson, and Sonia Burrows, nominated by Mayor Trentalis. And that rounds out tonight's resolution.
Do I hear, can someone please introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution has been introduced, could you please call the roll?
A resolution in City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating applicable board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too, and made a part here of Vice Mayor Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson.
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis.
Yes, and the introduced, the resolution has now been approved. Moving on to R2, this is a resolution providing a notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualified project submitted as an unsolicited proposal, and notice of intent to accept other proposals of the same project. Mr. Lagerblum, would you like to provide some information regarding?
I will, Mayor, as you're aware, we are in receipt of an unsolicited proposal at the Aquatic Center on the Barrier Island. This is the resolution that would be the commission's notice of intent to enter into a comprehensive agreement. You would need to set the number of days that we would accept competing proposals, somewhere between the twenty-one and a hundred and twenty days. But this is the project that you all are aware of, that I can't really talk to the specifics of it publicly at this point, but this is moving that item forward.
This is the project for the placement buildings?
For the east and west.
The east and west buildings, for the International Swimming Hall of Fame and so forth. Does anyone have any questions regarding this project? Okay, do I hear a motion to, excuse me, does someone like to introduce the resolution?
Mayor, I have a question, don't we have to set the number of days to accept other proposals?
Oh, we do, I think it was in the resolution.
Now, we left a blank this.
We left a blank, okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to make it twenty-one days, and I'll move the resolution.
Just twenty-one days? Okay.
Just twenty-one days?
Okay, so, the resolution as introduced by Vice Mayor is twenty-one days, and we tend to accept the unsolicited proposal. Please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent pursuant to Section 255.065 Florida statutes, to enter into a comprehensive agreement for a qualifying project to redevelop the existing east and west buildings of the Fort Lauderdale Aquatic Complex located at 501 Seabreeze Boulevard, also known as One Hall of Fame Drive, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and notice of intent to accept other proposals for the same project, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Sorry, I unmute myself, yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. R3, excuse me, R3, yes, quasi judicial appeal of a planning and zoning board denial of a vacation, a right-of-way application, portion of Northeast Eighth Street, this has been appealed by Holman Automotive.
Mr. Mayor, there's a request to defer this item to February 16th.
Okay, there's a request to defer this to February 16th. Do I hear a motion to defer?
Move to defer.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and the item will be deferred until February 16th, did you say?
Yes, sir.
Is that President's Day? I'm just kidding.
It's the third Monday of the month, Mayor.
Thank you.
R4?
I don't know if we should have this on the agenda following the medical director.
Hey. By the way, there were some people that had signed up for these previous two items, but I think that they were just here for questions, so that's why I didn't call upon them. Okay, R4. So, this is our time to do the city manager annual performance review. You know, I can start the discussion by simply saying that I think we really appreciate the work, Chris, that you have done, especially over this past year, getting us through COVID, getting us through our infrastructure challenges, and just being able to, you know, manage all these crises that have been thrust upon us all at once. I think you've done it with dexterity and precision, and I really don't think the city could have accomplished as much as they have without your leadership at the top, so I fully support this agenda item and to agree on the, on the recommendation for the raise. Someone else have any comments?
Yeah, I'll jump in, Mayor. I think Chris is doing an excellent job. He, I was talking to a neighbor today, and they were interacting with him on something, and they said he's so responsive and professional and level-headed through his interactions on, it was a difficult subject. So, I think that captures it well, I think we're very lucky to have him, I think he hires really good people, and he makes the right staff decisions, he has a great degree of transparency, responsiveness, he's caring, he cares about our city, he cares about the people, he works incredibly hard, he's dedicated, and.
Chris, right, not the mayor, is that what you're saying?
I thought we were talking about the mayor, sorry, yeah. I was talking about a vice mayor. So, he just does an excellent job, excellent job, he deals with conflict well, he tries to find win-wins, he tries to get to yes, I really appreciate him. And Mayor, I think we should give him a raise, I think we should go with a three percent raise, thank you.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion on the floor to give the city manager a three percent raise, do I hear a second?
I still like. He's still talking?
Yeah.
Second.
The second, okay, now discussion, Commissioner Moritas.
Well, I actually think if you look at Chris's salary and you look at the county manager, I believe what the county manager makes double what Chris makes. And I believe Chris works equally as hard, and our city is the county seat. I, am I correct that she makes about double you?
So I didn't.
I thought you were Republican.
I think you should make closer.
With your fiscal responsibility, yeah.
I am Republican, do you want me to give my Republican speech again? People should be commended appropriately for what they work for.
Let me just clear a couple things up, so the county organization is a much larger organization. What I put on the agenda tonight, though, in keeping with the style of the other charter officers, was just a performance review, so there's no resolution on here that asks or seeks a merit increase, so I just want to point that out.
Okay, but it's up to us.
It is, it certainly is up to you, but that's not, that we didn't publish that this year. But in answer to your question, I think so, but it is, again, it's a.
Yeah, that's a big.
Big organization.
Disparity.
Well, there, but there's, as Chris has indicated, you know, he's the manager of a city that's under two hundred thousand, and she's the manager of a county under two million, you know.
I think he's.
It's often commensurate with the level of responsibility, not just the amount of work.
I still think he's underpaid, the amount of hours.
And you know what, I agree with you, I agree with you, but it's also what we can afford, so.
I think we just gave a raise to the medical director.
Seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand, I think we could at least.
That's seventy, that's a seventy thousand dollars.
Over three years.
Yeah, it's over three years.
But at least we could, at least we could see Chris in Fort Lauderdale.
Let it go, Vice Mayor, let it go.
I'm going to let it go.
I think Chris should move.
Okay, you.
I think he's underpaid.
Okay.
Personally, anybody else have any suggestions?
I agree with Commissioner Moritas, I want to remind everybody that when we first hired Chris, he was at a very low entry level at that time, I don't remember the exact numbers, but I do remember that we said, well, let's see how it goes in a year, and it was a very low entry salary, and we never really did make up for that in the subsequent years, if I remember correctly.
Well, we, you're right, but we do have COVID, we do have a diminished income, is this the right thing to do at a time when we have less money to do it? I mean, there's no doubt, I wish we could give Chris twice the salary.
I'm not saying twice.
And, well, maybe instead of three, just because of the fact that we did hire him at such a low entry, and we just go to four, just to, you know, I understand all those things you're saying, but I also want to say, Mayor, that, you know, my gosh, look what he's faced ever since he became city manager, I mean, you know, talk about baptism by fire, I mean, what else could a person have to deal with in the time that he's been the city manager, I mean, oh, my gosh.
Maybe we should assess numbers, what numbers are we really looking at? I believe the county manager makes about four.
What is your base salary now, Chris?
I think you're about two hundred.
About two, right, about two thirty-four.
So Chris is around two, and she's about four, he should probably go to three.
Oh, wait, Chris, Chris, where does two, Chris, where does two thirty-four fit in all of the municipalities in Broward County?
So, I can distribute that information to the commission, that, you know, our budget office does look at that from time to time.
Your two thirty-four, what's Hollywood, what's Pembroke Pines, those are the biggest, right?
Pembroke Pines or Sunrise or?
Wasn't prepared for this discussion, so let me.
Hollywood, Hollywood and Pembroke Pines are the two, are the biggest, correct?
Correct.
Mayor, let's get that data, let's look at it, and then let's come back to this, I think.
Okay.
I've got the data. I'll send it around with the, that's, that's not, not something we should do on the fly, so.
Okay.
Thought about it. Wasn't on the fly.
I, I agree with you all, 100%.
200 is very low for professionals.
200 is low. So let's look at the data and come back.
We gave a 5% raise. That would raise it about another $11,000.
Chris, can you just tell me what Pembroke Pines in Hollywood is, please? Thank you.
Yep, just give me one second.
Just so I know. I mean, everyone wants to revisit it. We're talking about it now. I don't know why we just can't put things to bed when it comes up. We always got to revisit.
I agree, so let's just be patient.
So, uh, you asked for Pembroke Pines? Uh, Pembroke Pines 304 907.
Okay.
There for 31 years and Hollywood 279 802.
Well, there you go. That's enough in data for me.
Well, he's been there 30-something years.
I understand.
What is Hollywood?
Hollywood's 279 802.
How long has he been there?
Six.
And you're at 234? Well, he should, Chris should at least go to 250, but at least.
I moved that Chris goes to 250. That's exactly what I was thinking.
There you go. I seconded.
250,000 a year.
I don't think that's much of a jump. That's just his 3%, right?
No, it's not. It's 16, no.
I'm sorry. I, I taught second grade, just.
Wait a minute, wait, she's, no, 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 no. She's, no, no.
I'm, I'm right. He's at 234 plus 11.
It's a $16,000 increase, which is only about, which is about 5%.
Right.
So.
5%?
Yeah, but I think, I think we should.
Well, it's better, it's better than the 3% you were talking about.
I think we should go to 275.
I agree.
Okay.
All right. And it's plus plus, remember. This, that's just base pay. Keep that in mind.
Yes, but he has to promise to remain a District Two resident.
No, no, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
If you could get rid of those vacation rentals in your district, perhaps he would.
There you go.
All right, what, what base salary are you wanting? I didn't hear it.
It's 275.
275,000.
What percentage increase is that, Mayor, or the second grade teacher?
Well, it's a, it's a.
Less, less than what he deserves.
So it's about a 20% increase.
That's pretty good.
He's pretty good.
But I think, I, first of all, I think what you say, you all say it has great merit. I mean, Chris has done a remarkable job and I think, when he, we first set his salary, it was under circumstances that, uh, have since changed and I think that, uh, it behooves us as a commission to compensate people for what they're worth and, uh, you know, we'll just find ways to find the money and, but, you know, I think that he's, he's deserving of, uh, of at least that. And if we can do it tonight, I think tonight's the night to do it. So, when is your contract, uh, term annualized? When is it annualized?
January 1.
January 1. So we'll make it retroactive to January 1. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with 275. Yep.
Okay, do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mayor, I think, would this be a, a resolution and I, I could, I think I can handle.
Right. I mean, it's been articulated enough what the terms would be. It's a simple resolution. We just have to plug in the numbers. So I think based on the record, we can just draft one up and it'll be ready for the mayor's signature. So I think we'll find.
So I don't need to read any?
Well, you can read. Did you have the header from the last?
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, just read a simple header.
Okay. Who's introducing?
Who introduced the resolution? I think it was Commissioner Sorenson.
Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. So this is a resolution of the City, of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing for two, a $275,000 base salary for City Manager Chris Lagerblum and providing for an effective date retroactive to January 1, 2021.
Okay, um, I didn't, I didn't give anyone else a chance to speak. Commissioner McKenzie, I didn't really give you a chance to speak. Was there anything you wanted to add to this conversation?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So the resolution has been introduced. Uh, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Sorry, yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and the resolution has been approved. Congratulations.
Thank you. Sincerely, thank you all. I did not expect that was where we were going to go tonight, so, uh, well, a little off guard. I, I appreciate.
We thank you and, uh, that comes with a vaccine, by the way. No, just kidding.
Mayor, Mayor Chris, and Chris, uh, there's a lot of police activity on federal on Broward. Can we get, can Chief Dietrich or give us anything, any sense of what's going on? If possible?
I'm sure we can. Let me, uh, let me find out what it is before I just start talking about it in a public meeting unless the chief is comfortable. She's just come on the meeting, so.
Something is going on now, you're saying?
Yes.
I'm on this call, so let me make a couple of phone calls and, and see what I can find out.
Thanks, Chief.
What do you know that the rest don't? Are your spies out there?
Navy intelligence here, Mayor, Navy intelligence.
Is my partner off there sign waving again? It's over!
I'm checking the fire calls for service that are going on right now and I don't see anything in that area. So we'll, we'll wait for the chief.
Thanks, 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 Mayor.
Drone image of that so that we. Okay, let's move on to page one. Uh, this is a public hearing quasi judicial ordinance rezoning 1.46 acres of land from, uh, Plan Unit Development District to Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use District. Uh, because it's quasi judicial, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. One person has signed up to speak and, uh, but I first like to ask for disclosures. Commissioner Moritas, any disclosures?
Yes. Is this Steve Tilbrook?
Yes.
Yes, I met with him this week. Tuesday, I think. Hold on, let me find my folder. Let's just say Tuesday.
Okay, any site visits?
No, no site visits. 119 Steve Tilbrook.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. Um, page one, uh, I met with Gus Carbonell, um, January 14th, 2021, uh, at the PVCA meeting on September 21, 2020, and I met with Steve Tilbrook on January 14th, 2021. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Site visit and Stephen Tilbrook.
And Commissioner Sorenson?
Meeting with Stephen Tilbrook.
Okay, um, Mr. Tilbrook, did you and I meet at all on this? You're muted.
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor. I, I had a meeting with Scott Wyman and I briefed him and I sought to meet with you, but it was, it was a tough week with the inauguration.
Okay, all right. So you met with my proxy?
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right, um, all right. And I have no site visits. Okay, so, um, I have one person who has signed up to speak, Jenz Birding. Is, uh, Jenz Birding on the line?
Jenz is.
Yes, 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 you're mayor.
Okay, you're echoing? Okay, are you still there?
I think we probably muted again, so have to unmute again. Just on one device, please.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
I think you need to turn the speakers on yours.
Yeah, is this better now?
Much better.
I'm actually, uh, registered for page two or made the mistake by typing a number in, so I would reserve my time for page two, not page one, the rezoning of 5300 Powerline Road.
Okay, very good. So there's no one else who's, who's, uh, Mr. Tilbrook, do you have anything to say?
I, I have a presentation if you would like a brief presentation.
I don't think we need to see it.
No, thank you.
Okay, um.
Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved.
Okay.
Second.
And we have moved and seconded. Please call the roll to close public hearing.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Uh, would someone like to move the item?
I'd like to move the item. Second.
Seconded. Please call the roll. Any further discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
An ordinance demanding section 47-1.6.2b of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Regulations through, through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale on Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from PUD Plan Unit Development to NW RAC MUE Northwest Regional Activity Center Mixed Use East District Lots 1 through 10 less the east 15 feet thereof and all lots 39 through 48 Block 286 progress according to the platethrough, according to Platbook 2, page 18 of the Public Records of Dade County, Florida, located west of North Andrews Avenue, north of northwest 7th Street, east of, east of northwest 1st Avenue and south of northwest 8th Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Halls?
Yes, and the item is approved. Good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
This is not an approval of a site plan. This is just, um, changing the zoning, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, on to page two. Mr. Birding, I think I missed, misunderstood which item you wanted to be on. I apologize. Public hearing quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from, um, uh, industrial district to commercial recreation district through the allocation of commercial flexibility and associated site plan approval for Extreme Action Park. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
I only met with staff and I have been to the site.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, Vice Mayor?
Um, no disclosures. Did not meet with anyone.
Okay, Commissioner McKenzie?
None.
And Commissioner Sorenson? What was that, what was that arm I saw behind you moving?
I got a little sugar. I got a kiss. Doesn't happen too often.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was captured on TV and.
Captured forever.
Yeah. Okay, um, I don't recall meeting with anybody or having any site visits, so, um, let's move forward. Mr. Birding, would you like to speak on this item?
Mayor? Should, do I need to swear him in?
Yes.
Quasi judicial, we probably should.
Yes. Mr. Birding, are you on the phone?
I am on Zoom.
You're on Zoom, okay. Please raise your right hand.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Birding, before we go any further, do you have the ability to go on your video if you're on Zoom?
I am.
Our IT staff, can we move Mr. Birding so he has the capability of going on video?
Can you see? Okay, now I can start my video. Absolutely.
Okay, let's do that, uh, one more time.
I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand again and let's do the oath again.
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, great. Thank you. Please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak to this important, uh, topic. I am the co-owner of Spacebound Trampoline Park, uh, which is located right inside Extreme Action Park. So I'm very concerned, um, about the expansion of Extreme. Um, we have been in, operating in this business since the, uh, November of 2016 and, uh, we have managed through COVID. Uh, we've made the adjustments and adapted, um, to be open at this time. My concern is I've only, uh, been informed about this change through the public signage that was posted at the facility and I've been a little bit slow in sort of catching up with the application. The only problem that I really have with the application is that there are factual mistakes or missions in the application that concern me. And in particular, I'm referring to page A10 or H-1.0, existing floor plan of the facility. I think this was sort of provided to the staff, um, probably starting two years ago. And what I'm concerned about is that the exist, the, the Extreme Amusement Center is shown as owning the entire facility. Um, I don't know why they choose to represent themselves as the owner of the entire facility when, and I've uploaded this document with my markups when I registered for the meeting, so I hope that the floor plan is actually visible. Um, in that floor plan, there's other companies that are missing. Beacons, big transportation company with, I would say, 20 or 30, 18-wheelers parked on the outside of the facility. Primetime amusement, David Goldfarb is the, uh, owner of Extreme Action Park as well as his own company, so he would certainly know that his own company is there. Uh, Hard Knocks 365 Gym, uh, a gym that I have not been able to find any documents about, um, that any construction occurred there. Um, I think there's question about, uh, how did, does this gym come about it? And then there's the Spacebound Trampoline Park, which I am the co-owner of and which is shown as Extreme, uh, park property. I don't know the ramifications of providing this information, so I'm just alerting you as the commission that for, false information is being provided to you and, um, you have to decide how you act upon the information. Um, I also wanted to, uh, uh, highlight that in the floor plan, there are certain walls represented as still being on the facility and those have been removed years ago. My overall concern with the management of the facility is that, um, there is construction going on that I don't know and I don't know whether it is my responsibility to look at the public records against what I see in, in activity um, in the facility that does not always match the, uh, records. Um, there's examples that I can quote here. I think, um, one is, is during the COVID time, there was restructuring happening in the cafe and kitchen area. Um, there was other restructuring and remodeling done. Um, I have only done a very basic research of the permit, uh, the public records of permits and other things. I have not been able to see any, uh, requests for permits on drywalling, electricity and so forth. And I am very concerned about this and I would like to alert you to it, but I don't know how to manage it. I did contact Alejandro, uh, Anthony Fahadi, um, and we have a meeting in February, I think on February 4th, to address on this, but I obviously hope that, um, no decision is made until the city, uh, can look into the issue, maybe do a site visit and understand why Extreme decided to represent themselves as the owner and operator of the entire facility, which includes major operations, including myself.
Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate your input. Um, keep in mind that tonight we're just talking about rezoning. We're not talking about any site plan, uh, changes. Oh, wait a minute, associated site plan approval. Excuse me, we are talking about site plan approval, so.
So, Mr. Mayor, if, if we could, uh, bring Mr. Fahardo to the, to the podium and while he's doing that, uh, Michael Pizzi is, uh, on the call. He is, uh, the attorney for Extreme Action Park, whatever their name is that they're going by, and he has raised his hand to speak. Would you like to hear from, from their attorney now or at some point in the future?
Hello? I, I'm here. Okay, I'm, uh, Mike Pizzi on behalf of Extreme Action Park and its, uh, its owners. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to, uh, speak whenever, uh, your honor asks me to.
Go ahead. Please go ahead.
A couple of things. I just want to put, put a little, I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, what we're doing here today is we're, we're following the staff's recommendation and request that we change the zoning from industrial to commercial recreational to reflect, you know, what Extreme's always been doing and doing very, very well. Uh, as, as you know, the, uh, Extreme Action Park is the largest indoor commer, uh, commercial family entertainment center. You know, Extreme's, I think, I think the largest commercial family entertainment center in the country and they're really, really proud to be part of the Fort Lauderdale, uh, family. We're here tonight. Uh, Extreme is going to continue doing exactly, uh, what it's always done, which is provide the best in family entertainment. Uh, it's not going to be increasing any, uh, resources or putting any, uh, extra demands on traffic or, or, or increasing water usage or any other resources. increasing water usage or any other resources. We're simply here because, you know, we met with the staff over the years and your excellent staff, Mr. Fahardo, your manager, they recommended and made the point that because Extreme Action Park is doing family entertainment and is an amusement center, you know, and because Extreme Action Park is a family entertainment center, they said that the city really would prefer that the zoning be changed from industrial to commercial recreational, which includes amusement and so it will match, you know, the staff was of the opinion that we should change the zoning to commercial recreational, which allows, which is designed for the very type of amusement facilities that Extreme Action Park's been doing successfully with the support of the city for a number of years. I would note that we're not, we're not increasing any resources, we're not putting any additional demands on services. We're going to continue doing exactly what we've always been doing for years, which is excellent family entertainment. We're just changing the zoning and the zoning only, as your honor said, which...
I think we're also, and correct me if I'm wrong, it says that and associated site plan approval, so...
That's correct.
If we're just doing the zoning, that's one thing, but what concerns me, and I think it was brought out by the, by Mr. Birding, was the fact that if we're looking at a site plan and the parameters in terms of ownership, walls, the whole layout is not accurate, it's not a, it's not an accurate reflection of...
I can respond to that.
Existing condition, that would concern me. I have no problem with the zoning change, but I would have a problem with the site plan approval.
Yeah, let me address that, Mr. Mayor. We believe the site plan, you know, we've worked carefully with your staff in doing this for a couple of years now. We believe the site plan accurately reflects there and I want to correct one thing the gentleman mentioned, and that is that the application, you know, we went through the DRC, the application is on behalf of the owners, it's a very important point to make to respond to that directly, the application is on behalf of the owners of Extreme Action Park, which is Desert Powerline, Duncan, and Joe Luke. The application is not required to be on behalf of the trampoline park and laser tag and the go-carts and everything else that's there. I want to make the point that the application, we worked very carefully with Mr. Fahardo and Ms. Redding, the application tonight is on behalf of the, all of the owners, it is on behalf of all of the owners of Extreme Action Park and we were required to get the consent of all of the owners. It's not an application on behalf of every, every go-kart, every trampoline park or laser tag, it's on behalf of Duncan Properties, Desert Powerline, and Joe Luke. It's on behalf of all of the owners who are part of the application. We believe, so it is on behalf of the owners, we believe that the site plan accurately reflects the family entertainment that they're doing there and, you know, we note that with regard to this, we've worked with your staff, I think your staff will tell you, we've answered every question, they've been out there, we've worked with them for years, they know Extreme Action Park. I want to just highlight one more thing if I could. If you look at Page Two, if you look at the staff report, which attaches the surveys, the staff report does not cite a single flaw in the application. Ms. Redding did an unbelievable job and a thorough job and the staff report does not list any defect in the site plan, any defect in anything, we've done everything we've been asked to do. And if you look at the, on Page Two of the manager's report, the manager's report states that this is consistent with the master plan, it encourages tourism, your manager has told you that...
Get all that, I don't think we're, there's no dispute about all that and please don't get us wrong here, we're not here to debate something, we just want to get, make sure that the basis upon which we're making a decision is an accurate reflection of the existing conditions. Mr. Fahardo, do you want to talk about that?
Yes, Mayor, Anthony Fahardo, Department of Sustainable Development. The reason the site plan is attached because there's flex acreage going into this project for the rezoning.
Right.
I think many of us remember Mars Music, it was a musical retail establishment there that also had a venue. So when Extreme Action Park entered that space after Mars Music closed, they became successful, they started expanding into other spaces within the building, creating a nonconformity. So we have worked with them, as Mr. Pizzi said, over a long period of time to try and bring them into compliance. To the extent that there is a site plan, the concern over the interior buildout of the building, I don't think is as much of an issue. Tenants would often be swapped out, square footages would change related to those individual tenants. It's really more about the use. So as long as they don't expand past what square footages would be allocated if this were to be approved, it would be fine. Any associated parking would then be recalculated with those tenants and that happens on a regular basis.
Okay, well, do you see any concern about it not being exact, exact description of existing conditions are?
I don't have any evidence to show that it isn't an exact description of what the existing conditions are.
Okay, any questions?
Mayor, is there, is there an urgency to this or could we defer this just to clear up some of these, you know, contradictory statements and, but I don't know if there's an urgency to this, but can this wait till a few weeks till our next meeting? Just to maybe Anthony and others can clear up some of the discrepancies we've been listening to?
Well, he doesn't, he just said there are no discrepancies.
Well, no, he said there's no evidence.
Let me jump in just real quick, I don't think there's any, I mean, I think there's time sensitivity to it, but we've only been trying to do this for like three years, so, you know, a couple of weeks probably to clear something up is not going to change what's been the status quo for quite a while into it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mr. Fahardo hit the nail on the head, we're not, the site plan is consistent with the uses, we haven't gone beyond the approved uses, we haven't gone beyond the square footage for what's allowed. We believe the site plan's accurate, this has been pending for, you know, this has been pending for three years and the staff's been out there and we've, everyone agrees that the, everyone agrees we're doing what the staff asked us to do, we're doing what the city has been requesting us to do and it's the right thing and we believe the site plan, the site plan's the same as it's been, the site plan remains unchanged, we haven't, we haven't expanded beyond the use and, you know, we do not believe there's any discrepancy, we believe the site plan's consistent with what they've been doing and we're very proud to, we support one hundred percent the staff reports and we would ask for approval.
I'd like to move it, Mayor.
Well, we have to close public hearing first.
Yeah, and I'd still like to...
All right, so, do you have any, okay...
Mayor, can we hear from the district commissioner on this?
Can we just wait a second?
Sure, I'll wait too.
Okay, so the procedure is that those in the public who wish to speak are given the opportunity to speak. One person has signed up, the applicant's representative is here and has spoken, so we can now close public hearing and we can begin debate. So Commissioner Sorenson has moved to close public hearing, do I hear a second?
Before we close public hearing, could we just swear in Mr. Pizzi? I don't think we did.
We did not.
Yeah, if we can swear in Mr. Pizzi just since we didn't, just before we close public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Pizzi, could you please raise your right hand?
Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you gave or about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Was that a yes or no?
You're on mute. Yep.
That's a yes, okay. Okay, so please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Okay, Commissioner Moritas, you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you. I do believe we had new information slash evidence introduced tonight by Mr. Birding, so I would like us to just maybe look into his concerns and validate what he's saying or verify and then we can, we can bring it back, especially if he's claiming to kind of be a part owner in this property. I mean, if we're talking about representation of the ownership, I believe he should have his concerns addressed.
Okay, anyone else who'd like to comment on this?
Second, is that a motion? I'll move it.
So you want to move to defer this?
I'd like to move to defer.
They're the commission wants.
To a date search, so it's February sixteenth?
February sixteenth, does that give you enough time, Anthony?
I think our, I don't remember the date of our meeting, I think it's in the week after next.
Sixteen.
No, the meeting that I was gonna have with Mr. Birding, so I might need a little more time to make sure that we get everything together and can look at it, so if it could be the first weekend, March, that would probably be best.
Okay.
March second's fine.
So I moved it to defer to March second and Anthony can look into this with Mr. Birding.
Okay, is a motion on the floor to defer this to March second, do I hear a second?
I seconded it or made the motion or whatever.
Okay, so Commissioner Sorenson has seconded the motion to defer. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hells?
Yes, and the motion is approved to defer to March second. We'll have to, we'll have to, does that mean we're gonna lose you if you're out of, out of power, Vice Mayor? I'll talk quickly. Okay, well, what I need to do is the, the item, the resolution regarding January sixth has now been submitted by the city attorney's office and two versions have been submitted to us for review and approval. I need to take a break, I'm gonna say that we take a ten minute break now and allow the members of the commission to view the two, the two recommendations, so at least we have read them, digested them, and we can come back and at the end of the meeting we'll, we'll discuss them, all right? So we'll just take a ten minute break.
The recording has stopped.
I need to take a break. I'm gonna say that we take a 10-minute break now and allow the members of the commission to view the two, the two recommendations. So at least we have read them, digested them, and we come back, and at the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll discuss them, all right? So we just take a 10-minute break.
The recording has stopped.
Unified Land Development Regulations, General Aviation Districts to Adopt Airport and Helport-Helostop Zoning Regulations and Creating Section 47-3.12 to Add Regulations for Nonconforming Obstructions Located Within the Airport Hazard Area, General Aviation Airport District or Airport Industrial Park District.
Mr. Mayor, let me interrupt just real quickly. I'm getting messages that people at home cannot hear, that they don't have sound. So I want to make sure we clear that up before we keep going.
Okay.
Good. Okay, I believe we're okay.
Okay. For those of you who are just now being able to hear, all I did was just read the PH3 agenda item, and now we're opening it up to public hearing. There are two people who have asked to speak on this item, Robert Mensah and Pratik Sharma. So is Robert Mensah here? Is he online? Okay.
Yes, I'm here. Sorry.
Mr. Mensah, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'm here to answer questions.
Just, okay. How about Pratik Sharma? Pratik, are you here?
Hand is raised, be recognized, star six, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here to answer questions as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions regarding this item? If not, do I need to close public hearing? No, okay. So, someone like to move the item?
I do have a question from the commission. If we're done with public hearing?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and thank you all for the work you've done on this. I know it was a multi-agency task, so I appreciate that. I just have one question. I don't know who's the best person to answer it. I just want to confirm that this ordinance will not get in the way of a project that we will do at Lockhart Park on the south side, that this ordinance will not be more restrictive than the FAA ordinance, that it's just kind of cleaning up or putting into place something that was asked from us years ago. It's just the, the timing of it is interesting.
Yeah, I, I can, I can take it first. I think you can get the same answer out of the both of us, that this, does, it in no way makes it more restrictive than what the FAA would have, if something attained FAA approval, our ordinance would not bring.
And I'll throw in not only FAA, but this is a product of Chapter 333, which is an FDOT requirement essentially, that we enter into this ordinance that really replicates what the requirements are under Florida statute. So it's not only not more restrictive than the FAA, but it wouldn't be more restrictive than FDOT's requirements as well. So it memorializes what's required on the Chapter 333. And we have looked, you know, the city manager and I have looked at the site itself, and from every appearance, there would not be any hindrances.
So when we apply for approval for a project we're doing on the south side of Lockhart Park, we have to get approval from FDOT and FAA?
No, typically, that's, that would be the case right now.
Okay.
This would replace FDOT's process, so essentially it would be the city and the FAA at that point.
Okay, so since we're adopting this tonight, when we move forward with our own project, which should come forward maybe in six months or so, I don't know, maybe sometime in the next year, that this will replace it, the city commission approves it, as long as the FAA approves it?
Right.
Okay.
And unless there's some strange thing that pops up where FDOT has to chime in on it, but it wouldn't be anything additional that's not in existence.
Okay, so I was just focusing on mostly the area, the south end of the Lockhart Park. Rufus, you're, you're good with this, with all other airport properties? And I know you've worked on this, so I'm sure you are good with it. I know this will probably affect some other areas in addition to the one that I've been focusing on.
I saw Rufus on the-
He's here, he's running, he's running it up, sorry.
Even better, I saw his name earlier.
He's tiptoeing.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners. Yeah, well, I reviewed it, and I actually had a conversation with our consultant, and so there are no issues with it from the standpoint with the concerns you have.
And is our master plan that we completed recently, is, is that tied into this also? Was that a requirement of the master plan to make sure that we get this work done?
No, it's not part of the master plan. And, you know, one other thing I can say for certainty is that, I know you had concern with the FAA approving. So typically, the FAA doesn't approve anything other than a airport master plan, or the, I'm sorry, the airport layout plan. So if we were to go to the FAA with this, and there were any issues, they would give their opinion on what needs to be adjusted and so forth.
In this, okay. So the other properties, like I said, I was kind of focusing on the Lockhart Park side.
Yeah.
Rest of this, you're good with?
Yes, yeah.
That's it for me. I, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, does anybody else in the commission have any questions?
Nope.
Sorenson?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Okay, Commissioner Moritas introduces the ordinance.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending the Unified Land Development Regulations of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, creating Section 47-3.12 entitled "Nonconforming Obstructions" and amending Section 47-14 entitled "General Aviation Districts to Regulate the Use of Land on and in the vicinity of Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport and Helostop/Helport by modifying airport zoning regulations and adopting airport and helostop/Helport Hazard Zoning Regulations, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective." Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the ordinance is amended. Now, on to OSR 1, Second Reading, An Ordinance Amending the Pay Plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale by amending the non-bargaining compensation table and Schedule 6, providing a 1 and 1/2% general wage increase effective October 4th, 2020. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, no one has signed up to speak. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Call the roll.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending the pay plan of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table and Schedule 6, thereby providing a 1 and 1/2% general wage increase to non-bargaining unit employees in Schedule 6, special employees, and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes, and Mayor, I just wanted to mention that, maybe Chris already mentioned to you, but the police activity at Broward and Federal was resolved. Everyone's all right. Thanks. Yes to this.
Okay, thank you for letting us know.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and OSR 1 is now approved on second reading. OSR 2, this is a second reading, an ordinance creating Article 9, Landlord Registration Program, and of Chapter 9, Buildings and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale. We have one person who signed up to speak, Kelly Mallett. Is Kelly here?
She is.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, Mayor. Just wanted to say, on behalf of the Southeast Florida Apartment Association, thank you for the changes to this ordinance. Just wanted to thank you and the members of the commission, the manager, the city attorney, and staff, Portia, who was very helpful in, in talking with me through our concerns. So just wanted to thank you for those changes.
And you are here on behalf of?
The Southeast Florida Apartment Association.
Okay, landlords, okay, great. All right, thank you. I see no one else to sign up to speak, so would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Introduced. Please call the roll.
An ordinance to the city commission and city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending Chapter 9, Buildings and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by creating Article 11 to be entitled Landlord Registration Program, requiring the registration of tenant occupied residential dwelling units for a landlord registration program, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and I'd just like to point out, I know the Realtors Association had reached out to all of us in one way or another, and, and there was a fear that this might impose a burden on property owners, landlords, and, you know, the intent is not here to place burdens, but to create an opportunity for the city to be able to communicate directly with landowners, property owners, landlords, in case of emergency, in case of providing notices for various events that affect property. So we're just hopeful that we can work to cooperate with one another and to ensure the success of this measure. If it turns out that the measure's not working in the way we intended, we can certainly revisit it. Okay, OSR 3, this is a second reading, an ordinance amending the city code of ordinances, city of Fort Lauderdale, Chapter 9, Building and Construction Fees. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? There being none, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced by Commissioner Moritas.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending Section 9-48, General Permit Fees, Chapter 9, Buildings and Construction, Article 2, Permits and Inspections, Division 2 Fees of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida by amending Building Permit Fee Schedule for Certificates of Occumcy, Providing for Severability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinance Provisions, and an Effective Date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved on second reading. OSR 4, this is a second reading, Receiving the Commons at Cypress Creek Development of Regional Impact, formerly known as the Lightspeed Broward Center Development of Regional Impact. When one person signed up to speak, Mr. Lockery, I assume you're here, just answer any questions. Does anyone have any questions? There being none, someone like to introduce, do you have any comments on this?
No, I've met with Robert.
Okay, okay.
Lockery has unmuted himself. Mr. Lockery, do you have something?
No, I don't have any comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, someone like to introduce?
Introduced.
It's been introduced by Commissioner Moritas. It's called the roll.
An ordinance to the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida rescinding ordinance number C-02-11 as amended by ordinance number C-07-100, which ordinance amended and restated the development of regional impact, development order for the commons at Cypress Creek Development of Regional Impact located south of Cypress Creek Road, north of Northwest 60th Street, east of Andrews Avenue, and west of I-95 within the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and OSR 4 is approved on second reading. Now, we have the walk-on matter, this is a resolution concerning the matters that took place in the federal capital on January 6th. Two proposed resolutions have been provided to each member of this commission, and I'd like to be able to approve one tonight. So I guess we'll start with you, Commissioner Moritas. Did you have a chance to review these?
I did review them, and I believe Resolution 1 has more of the combined language we are looking for. So I am going to support Resolution 1 at this point.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. I don't know which one is 1 or 2, but are they numbered exactly?
Well, Resolution, in referring to 1 and 2, Resolution 1 is the longer of the 2.
Okay, I prefer Resolution 2, and I'll tell you why. When I first contacted Chris and said I wanted to present a resolution, my thoughts were this. I did not want to talk about Trump. I did not want to talk about Biden. I did not want to talk about COVID. I did not want to quote presidents. I did not want to make it partisan, and that's why I left out all of those names, any presidents, any reference. I simply wanted to get to the, the meat of the issue and condemn what happened. I think that the quotes in the first one, Kennedy, Reagan, you know, I don't know how the whole world feels about them, or, you know, I don't know why it's necessary, as I don't think they addressed the issue at hand. I also believe that those two men would have never imagined what would have happened, and if it did happen in their day, these would not have been the- and if it did happen in their day, these would not have been the quotes that we would have seen from them in reference to the happenings that we witnessed. That's how shocking that would have been. So when my office and I looked at the two resolutions this afternoon, what we did was first, we tried to get rid of redundant language. Actually, I'll be honest, we worked off of mine, because I did request from the city manager that I present a proposal, present a resolution. We worked off of mine. So we looked for new language in the mayor's proposal that was not already in the proposal that, on the resolution that we submitted to the city manager. And we did just that. We eliminated the redundancy. And then where that took us was where we pretty much added a couple of paragraphs as a really good conclusion from the mayor's resolution. We added that to just before the therefore, and it consolidated everything. And that's why it's also a page shorter than resolution one, because it condenses, it gets rid of redundant language, and it just makes it tighter. And those are my thoughts. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great. Commissioner McKenzie?
Number two?
Number two. Okay, that's the one proposed, the one that Commissioner Vice Mayor supports, okay? Commissioner Sorenson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I had hoped we could get a unanimous approach on this. I don't, it's sounding like it's not going to happen. I don't. So that's my preference. If we can't get unanimous and I have to pick one, then I'm going to go with resolution two.
Okay. I'm going to say that I preferred resolution one. Both of them are fine with me. But the thing is that the reason why we prepared resolution one the way we did was to, I wasn't interested in creating a caustic document. The very first paragraph in resolution two says, "The city of Fort Lauderdale condemns the dissemination of false information incitement of a mass riot." And the first resolution incorporates that language. But you know, folks, we're at a time when we're trying to promote healing and some goal.
Mayor, you just cut out. You froze. Can anyone hear me?
I think in the, I froze?
Yeah, you did for a while, at least when I was just listening. I don't know if it happened to anyone else, but go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, and to try to be consistent with the spirit and the message of our new president and vice president in trying to be, trying to be aspirational and trying to be inclusive. I just didn't think that condemnation is where we should be going as a city. We did condemn the actions inside the body of the document. We talk about all the things that did happen on January sixth. I lifted most of that language out of your resolution, Vice Mayor. And yet, at the same time, I was hoping that we could clarify and justify who we are as people, to try to be as inclusive as possible. I do think that the language is a little divisive in resolution two. And, and you know, maybe that was the intent to focus on the actions of those folks that attacked the Capitol on January sixth. But we recognize it was an attack on the Capitol. We recognize it was an attack on the democratic process. We recognize that there was an intent to interfere with the final process necessary to conclude the presidential and vice presidential election. But we need to talk more about that. We need to talk more about how we need to come together as a nation. And I think that what I had proposed was in keeping with that, because that's what the president and the vice president have asked us to do. So.
And Mayor, I, Mayor, I agree with you, and that language is in the reso two. That is, it's all very much there about healing and coming behind the new president and the administration. Everything you've just said is all in reso two.
It's in the last paragraph.
Excuse me?
It's just in the last paragraph or last.
Not, not actually.
Sort of buried it.
Well, I think you have to start, I think you have to start off by condemning what happens, and then you go into that phase after you hold folks accountable. You go into that phase. I don't know how much time you want to spend on this, Mayor. I just counted three to two for reso two. What would you like to do?
Well, I'm running the meeting, and.
I understand.
You have someplace to go, you know, I understand, but.
Well, no, but I often hear from you when you get impatient with me talking. You often say to me, can we move this along? Can we move this along? So I just am asking how long you want to talk about this?
Well, I want to talk about it until we're all comfortable about this, because honestly, I think that Commissioner Sorenson makes a very good point. We should not be divisive as a commission in trying to talk about a resolution that talks about not being divisive.
Exactly. I don't, I don't want us to be divisive at all, but we had two resolutions prepared. I don't even know why we had two prepared, because when I contacted the city manager, I said I'm going to prepare a resolution.
Vice Mayor, I'm talking. Great.
Go ahead.
I'm talking, and I don't want to be interrupted. Okay?
Go ahead.
So, so the point that I'm trying to make is that I think that we should do our best, and if it takes a little bit more time tonight, I don't think it's past anyone's bedtime yet. But I do think that this is really, really important. It's important to tell our constituents and people that we represent that we are aware of what's happening nationally and how we want to be part of that national narrative about inclusiveness and understanding, and to recognize that we will not tolerate bad conduct even in our own community. Attempts at that occurred on May thirty-first, and you know, and we responded. So the point that I'm trying to make is that we should make an attempt here tonight to try to come up with a unanimous resolution so that we feel comfortable forward in telling the world that Fort Lauderdale is part of the national dialogue in trying to bring inclusiveness and harmony to this, to our country, but it's part of the whole nation. So if there's any way that we could come to that conclusion, I'm prepared to do it. But I have to be honest with you, Vice Mayor, the very first paragraph that you have is really offensive to me, because it doesn't strike the tone of trying to be, you know, to be the leaders that we need to be for everybody. It just immediately comes out as an attack, okay?
No, it's a condemnation, Mayor. It's a condemnation, and you have to start there. You have to start with what happened, and you have to start by condemning what happened, and then you bring in all of the reconciliation. Then you bring in all of the healing. Then you bring in the not trying to divide. And again, there is no political mentioning in my original version at all, none at all. So, and I've mentioned no one by name, whether it's past presidents, current president, former president, just former president. I've done none of that. If you really do read through mine, and I'll be happy, because you know, earlier in the day, you looked at mine, and then you and Commissioner Moritas asked me to remove some language. I said, fine, I will remove that language. And then I thought everything was okay, but then, but then, no, it wasn't okay for some reason. Then we had to look at another version. And then I don't know how that exactly happened, because I thought we were working off the one that was originally submitted, and I was asked to eliminate language that Commissioner Moritas found offensive.
Well, I think what he said was, let's merge, let's try to merge the documents. Was it as if trying to work from one document over another? It was.
And that's what, and that's what my office and I did this afternoon. We got rid of all of the redundant language. We worked off of getting rid of redundancies. We eliminated language referring to presidents that might not be what people want to hear, or they might not like those presidents, or for whatever reason. I did not want this to be a partisan document, so I didn't want to refer to presidents that, again, had no inkling of what might ever happen. And then what I simply did was add the whereas clauses from your resolution that I thought were not in my original one, added those, and wrapped it all up in three pages. So that's how my office and I worked this afternoon on the two documents.
Mayor, so let me just summary in the first paragraph, whereas the city of Fort Lauderdale condemns the dissemination of false information. Would, tell me what doesn't sit well with you? Condemns false disinformation, false information, that or?
Well, I think what I'm having difficulty with is that I was hoping that the resolution would be an opportunity for us to send a message of reconciliation, at the same time condemning the conduct that occurred on January sixth. As I read, as I read resolution two, every single paragraph in the first page and all the way up until just the last two paragraphs of the whereas clauses talk about basically are attacking the conduct, and while.
Mayor, read, Mayor, read the third whereas. Tell me how that's attacking.
Vice Mayor, I'm talking. Do not inter.
Go ahead.
You, please do not inter.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, so what I had hoped was we could merge the two documents which talk about, which have more aspirational language than resolution two seems to have.
Aspirational language.
So we, so we, we need to, we as a governing body of the city of Fort Lauderdale need to find ways to bring people together, okay? And I'm not condoning any of the actions that took place on January sixth. I think everything that the Vice Mayor's resolution says are in keeping with my feelings of what occurred there. Every single paragraph is on point. But what didn't happen in the merging of the documents was it left out all the positive aspects of how we can come together and heal as a nation. Keep in mind that there are a lot of people in our city that support the former president. And there are a lot of people in our community that do not support what happened on January sixth who voted for the former president. So keep in mind that we're not trying to condemn those who voted Republican. We're trying to bring people together in our community, not because of who they voted for, but because they share a common interest in maintaining the dignity and integrity of the democratic process. And I don't think there's much of that, that we're not reaching out to that part of our community in resolution two. Whereas I thought we were trying to do it in resolution one. So that's my concern, and you know, I want to, I think we should be a commission for everybody, and we do our best to do that. So like I said, look, I can live with either one, but I just want, you know, as this goes down as the resolution that represents the city of Fort Lauderdale, it would be best if we did vote unanimously, and I think I would feel more comfortable voting for resolution two if there were, if the resolution started out with, at least with the, with a recognition of what we were trying to achieve yesterday. And that was, you know, bringing in a new era of hope and support, which is what the swearing in of the vice president and the president did. But again, if you guys are comfortable with that, you know, I'll go with it, but.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can we add, can we then add your first, your first whereas clause as the first whereas clause in reso two? And then I did want, that's fine with me if you feel that strongly about that. I, again, I did not want to bring in the election or the people, but we, I did add that in the there, right before the therefor's, I did add that reference at the end to try and merge the two. But I'm fine with adding your first whereas as the first whereas. If you feel that strongly about us starting off with condemning what happened, then I'm fine with you adding that. But I do want to point out, because you said the whole first page is, you know, attacking, the third whereas, whereas we respect the honesty and accuracy of the vote count in Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, the state of Florida, and the United States of America, some of those.
No, that's, I agree. That's a good paragraph.
It's positive, and you know, Florida went one way, the country went another, you know, Broward County went another. But again, I have tried really hard not to make this partisan. And then if you look at what we did at the end, the last two whereases are very healing. Whereas this represents an opportunity for our nation to heal from, that's your whereas from a downward spiral. And then the whereas after that, right before we do the therefore, whereas all Americans now should stand together. That is your, that is your whereas that we added into the merger, and then it makes sense.
I appreciate that. So if we could soften it up with perhaps adding my introductory whereas clause and maybe the second one also, I'd be good with that.
And then Heather, how does that land with you? What's your reaction to that adjustment?
Yes, I mean, I gave most of my kind of overall partisan thoughts earlier. I will say, I do prefer, kind of just in language, the section one, two, and three of the mayors. Especially, I know, Vice Mayor, you're trying not to maybe call out the name of a president. But you know, I do think where it says in section three that the city commission calls on residents to join together and supporting the new administration of President Biden, respecting the outcome of the election, doing our individual collective part to help heal the nation. I think that's just a little bit stronger. I do think we can say that we will support the new administration. And I did said, kind of, respect the results of the election, allow the new administration to begin the work. That's just my thoughts.
I'm with you on that, Commissioner Moritas. Is that?
I think it's okay. Yeah, Vice Mayor, I mean, I know you don't want to name any names, but it is kind of reality, and it's where we are, and it is.
Well, we, no, but the second resolution, actually, we do add in the names that the mayor wanted in terms of Biden and Harris. Mayor, I'm fine with what you just offered, adding your first two whereases as the first two whereases.
Okay, how about, okay, so, all right, that's fine. And what else did you say, Commissioner Moritas?
I was looking at the very, the section threes.
Section three, Vice Mayor, at the end of the first reso.
Yes, what about it? I'm sorry.
And also, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just, I don't know. It could just be a preference. It's somewhat the same, but it does say asking our residents to join together and supporting the new administration of President Biden.
Right, so we'll add that as a section four to resolution number two?
Might be the same.
Isn't it this, don't we already say that?
Do we?
Not, you really don't say it.
Don't, you don't. It would.
You really, you kind of say this administration and that, and let's just allow them to work and stuff, but.
So which section is that on the first reso?
Section one, two, three.
At the end.
Section.
Oh, section threes.
So section three will add a section four, and section four becomes section five.
Calls on residents to join together and support.
And we're going to add the two whereas clauses at the beginning of your resolution.
That sounds good.
Okay, I'm good with that. Are you good with that, Moritas?
I am. Like I said, the tone's a little, a little tough, but it was a tough issue. So I, you know, maybe we need to, maybe we need to be tough.
Okay, all right. So we have resolution, we have a resolution being introduced tonight by the Vice Mayor as amended, which includes the first two whereas clauses of, we're going to refer to it as resolution one.
Right.
Okay, and those will be added at the beginning of resolution two. And then, in addition, section three of resolution one will be now section four of resolution two, and section four of resolution two will now become section five.
Okay.
We got, got that upstairs?
Yep.
Are you good with that, Vice?
Yes, that sounds wonderful. So let me ask Alan and Kristen, where exactly will this go? Will this go to all, all different levels, county, state, federal, all of our elected officials at those levels? Where will this actually go?
That's your pleasure. We didn't add specific language, because that hadn't been brought up by either proposer. But if you want to direct us to include a paragraph at the end, as we have, I think, in some of the others, to direct us to distribute it to whoever you want, we'll distribute to.
Mayor, I don't know how you feel, but I think it should go to everyone. I think it should go to every single level of government and all of our elected officials from all those different levels of government. What do you think?
I agree. You can shout it from the mountaintops. I'm good with that. We put it on Twitter, put it on our Facebook page. I'm good with all of that. I'm good with it because we're doing unanimously.
Yes.
So you're, so the resolution has now been introduced as amended. Please call the roll.
And just for clarity's sake. And just for clarity, say, all of government is kind of big, so let me just clarify that a bit. So obviously, well, do you want to send it, obviously, to the cities in Broward County, the Broward County Commission? We can send it to the Florida Senate, the House of Representatives, like we've done before, to.
And the governor.
Bodies, and the governor, of course. And then we can send it to the White House, the congressional delegation, I mean, however you want to.
Well.
I'm not, you're not necessarily.
Is there a, is there one email list that we have?
I'm sure we can have one, I'm sure we have one somewhere. Maybe Daphne can help us with that. I think that would be a good job for Daphne. Okay, so we'll hit all the major spots.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Okay, would you please call the roll?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, sending its condolences to the family of Officer Brian Sicknick, affirming its support for the members of the Capitol Police, condemning the events at the U.S. Capitol on January sixth, 2021, encouraging the healing of the nation, urging all citizens to respect the results of the 2020 presidential election, and allow the new administration to begin the necessary work of governing our nation and addressing the significant issues that we face, and providing for an effective date. Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorenson?
Yes, thank you all for your work on this.
Commissioner Maritis?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Hales?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate everyone's cooperation. And is there any further business of the City Commission?
I don't have anything.
Meeting is concluded. Thank you.
Good work, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you all.
And commission.